All right, good evening, everyone. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam.
Here.
Anaway. Gibson.
Here.
Chapler.
Here.
Ormsby.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. Okay, we had minutes from the last meeting.
I'll move for approval of the minutes. Joe.
Okay, Joe, motion?
Second.
Second and to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 16th, 2022. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved from February 16th, 2022. So, good evening, everyone. We see a big crowd in the audience tonight, so we'll be anxious to have your input, which will do with each respective case. We are the Plan and Zone Commission. We are a seven-member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. We are a recommending body only with the city council making the final decision. So, everything we do here is a recommendation format that goes to the city council. We have regular meetings on the third Wednesday of each month at 5:30, and it is to hear rezoning requests preliminary and final plaids, site development and landscape plans, and planned unit development plans. So, that's our general scope. With the bigger crowd tonight, I'm going to kind of read you the guidelines for public input, so we're kind of sure how the meeting runs. We value public input. That's a true statement. It's our goal to allow ample input from the public while also progressing through the meeting agenda in a timely manner. I've not had my dinner yet, so hopefully before nine o'clock, but if it takes too long, we'll still be here. We ask that those wishing to make comment do so on the agenda items with the following guidelines. Wait to be recognized by the chair. That would be me, and I would ask you to come to the podium to my right and to your left back there and state your name and interest in the case, so we can pick it up on the cameras and video or audio for the record. Avoid repetition of previously made statements, but I know everybody wants to say their part, so just the best effort you can have would be appreciated. We would avoid if there's no digression from the agenda, kind of stay on focus the best we can. I know there's a lot going on in the world right now, but we'll stay focused on our agenda. Address all comments and questions to the chair. They ask that it come through me, and then I funnel it back out, so we don't want to have people talking back and forth across the room to maintain the order. And please don't yell, use obscenities, or make threatening actions. We've got the policeman here, so he'll escort you out if anybody gets unruly. So, hopefully, we'll have a good meeting. We're looking forward to your input, and with that, we will begin. I think, Mark, you've got the first case?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would note that the original case 22-003 has been withdrawn by the applicant. That's been replaced by case 22-008, and I'm ready to give those slides if you're ready for them.
Okay, please proceed.
So, case 22-008 comes before you as what I'll make a note of as a conditional rezoning. It's roughly located at the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Criswell Street. It is a rezone from A1 to R3 is the requested rezoning. Applicant is Dick McNamara Construction LLC. The request rezoned 30 acres plus or minus from A1 to R3. It is outlined in blue on the slide in front of you. You'll note there's a kind of a puzzle piece corner cut out there. That corner is not in consideration for redevelopment at this time. I would note that the future land use map for that corner is community commercial, as the city does foresee that being a commercial corner at some point in the future. Proposed uses are 46 single-family homes, basically on the, I'll say, the west half of the site, and 19 townhome structures, four units in those townhome structures. That puts it at 118 units total. Altogether, that's 3.9 units per acre. I did mention the northeast corner already, and I would note that there have been cases 21-091 and 22-003 that considered this plot of ground but were withdrawn by the applicant previously. Those did have much more dense conceptual plans, and one of those was the subject of a neighborhood meeting that some people may have attended. And one was the subject of a neighborhood meeting that some people may have attended. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, this is a future land use map. I'm sorry, this is, yeah, future land use map, and it's currently zoned A1. The future land use map would have this turn to ULI. The requested zoning is R3. That's mixed residential. R3 is allowed under ULI, or urban light intensity. So, just the concept here, because we have a lot of people in the audience. Future land use map is done at the comprehensive planning stage. That's a community-wide planning effort where we decide how we want future uses to occur across land, across the city, over time. Following that is the zoning. So, from future land use leads to zoning. So, your future land use has certain zoning districts that are allowed underneath it. In this case, residential R3 is allowed under ULI. I did mention the red corner of that piece of property. That is neighborhood commercial. The future land use concept for that is neighborhood commercial, and there are, at some other date, for some other discussion, certain uses that could come into use there that are commercial-related. Again, not a part of this project. I would remind the commission that we've had some similar cases. Wyndham Villas, The Meadows, and Quail Hollow come to mind, and each of those had, how I would say, had their own way that they dealt with the development around them. Sometimes, they added buffers. Sometimes, they put single-family homes next to single-family homes as they transitioned into multifamily or townhomes, which is the case here. As far as a type of rezoning, Wyndham went to R4, Meadows went to R3, and Quail Hollow went to a combination of R2 and R3. And the units per acre were in order there on the slide. 8.2 at Wyndham, 4.4 at The Meadows, and 2.4 at Quail Hollow. Next slide, please. So, this is the look at the concept plan. And again, it's not a site plan. It's a concept plan. In a conditional rezoning, the concept has a little bit more meat to it, if you will, because we are conditioning this rezoning on what's presented in the concept plan. So, you might be used to the normal process, I'll say, of a rezoning where you have the rezoning come through. It's kind of a generic rezoning, and then you have a site plan that is much more specific, then a preliminary plaid, and then a final plaid and site plan. With this one, because staff has brought it to you as a conditional rezoning, we're going to pay a little more attention to this concept plan. It's a little more, has a little more bearing on the future of this development. So, I'll point out a few things. It has a 40-foot buffer yard with a berm at Forest Grove that gives us buffer from a traffic, a potential source of traffic. It also has a 35-foot rear yard setback on all single-family home lots at the edge of the property. Both of those are above or in excess of the minimum setbacks required by code. So, wherever a single-family home is at the edge of the property, so the west edge and the south edge in particular, there's at least a 35-foot setback. The site, roughly 30 acres overall, and so these are kind of round numbers here. 17 acres plus or minus are single-family homes. So, you have a 17, really, kind of have two sites here. You have a 17-acre plus or minus, single-family home development on the west, a little more than half, obviously, if 30 is the number. And then you have about 10 acres plus or minus of townhomes. That single-family development is 2.5 units per acre. The adjacent to the west development is 2.2 units per acre. So, staff sees a pretty similar comparable density there. The townhomes have 19 structures, four units each, 7.6 units per acre, and those transition from single-family use on the west side to, you have four rows of that, to a single row of townhomes, and then you're at your commercial corner, and just south of that commercial corner, you have townhomes. And then you do have some drainage reserved, detention reserved there at the southeast corner of the property. Next slide, please. Here are some views of the site. These are just taken from Google Earth. So, this is looking at Nottingham Road and Forest Grove, looking to the southwest. So, Huntington Meadows subdivision is what's appearing in the distance, and the bean field, as it's a bean field in this picture, the bean field is the site there. Next slide. And this is at Nottingham, looking southeast. Again, the bean field being the site. You can see, I believe, Sterling Wood subdivision in the sidewalk there on the left of the slide, and then the subject property is in the far ground, the bean field again. Next slide. This is from the intersection of Nottingham and the first road in, I'm not going to be able to say it, Wellington Court. There it is. So, this is Wellington Court and Nottingham, looking to the property line. So, just coming straight out that road, you basically drive right into the site. Next slide. And then this is from Wellington Court, looking toward the property. Here, you have, if you kind of see just past the mailboxes into the foreground or the far ground there, you see a bean field there. Actually, that bean field is not the subject property. It's a little bit farther off in the distance. You can kind of see some power poles, and that's where the property would begin. Next slide, please. And then this is looking from Prairie Grass Lane, trying to find a, you know, using Google Earth, trying to find a spot in between two homes where I was trying to show the projection of the property next to this development. And again, it's the bean field. All the green kind of blends in there, but between those two homes is the shot I was trying to give you. Next slide, please. So, because this is developed with city right-of-way, so these are all city roads, 53-foot right-of-way with five-foot sidewalks. It will be city infrastructure built to city standards. It will be plowed by the city. It will be subject to city snow crews and garbage trucks and all those things. So, there'll be our roads as a city. And there is future connectivity down to the south, and that's really important for staff, because we do see this part of town growing. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have four points of ingress or egress, so two to the north and two to the east. That really helps with traffic flow, and I think will be important as this subdivision develops. Next slide, please. The single-family homes are contemplated to be built by separate builders, so those will be sold off by the developer and then built by whatever builder chooses to buy them, either as custom homes or spec homes, as the case may be. So, I obviously don't have elevations of those, because they could be many things. I do have some elevations provided here by the applicant of the townhomes. I will note they're single-story. That does match the character of that neighborhood. And I think there's one more slide with elevations on it. And they do have some green space and some lawn space in front, so again, kind of matching it more of a traditional single-family home environment with that front yard. Pretty good snow storage. That's something we worry a lot about as a city. Fairly adequate snow storage. Next slide, please. Of course, it's the developer's responsibility to connect to all utilities. We have private water and private electricity here, so that's IO American and Mid-America, and those are already out in the site, as we already have two subdivisions out in this part of town. There'll be connection to city sanitary sewer required. Stormwater detention is on-site. Again, that's in the southeast corner there, a little over an acre, I'd say. And then the way this is designed, it would be eligible for municipal waste collection, and we would anticipate that this would all be served by municipal waste collection. So, we would, just like your normal single-family home, we'd have your totes. We'd go out, we'd pick them up. We don't see any problem with that design. Where the dead ends are right now, we are going to have to have some type of turnarounds for city vehicles down there. One is shown. That may be adequate, but I need to check with our Public Works and Operations people to make sure that's okay. Until those roads extend, of course, we want to be able to turn vehicles around. Next slide, please. So, again, I mentioned conditional rezoning, and so the conditions really are the form of an agreement that reflects the drawing that's on the screen in front of you. So, that means that the site plan, which would come usually in the future step, must be materially like what the drawing is in front of you. And so, matching the concept plan. This preserves a single-family use on the west side of the property. So, if there's concern that the developer may change things around or move things, this conditional rezoning gives the city authority to deny that developer, that development, if it doesn't look like what we see on the screen today. So, this kind of becomes almost a de facto site plan under a conditional rezoning. We're going to have gravity sanitary sewer, and again, I think I mentioned preserve the single-family home use. There is the possibility, until we get the gravity sewer extended, that they may have a lift station that they would put in at their cost and then have to abandon at their cost once they connect to our gravity sewer. Next slide, please. So, just a little reminder here that, this is a little bit inside baseball, but as zoning commissioners, I'm sure you're familiar with this. When we go through a rezoning, we go through, I think it's a seven-part test. I think there's six on the screen, but it's really a seven-part test, and we're asking ourselves as staff, does it conform to the future land use map and the comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan? Will it not negatively impact nearby parcels? Are there externalities that have been adequately considered? So, especially in commercial environments, are we going to have noise or odor, those type of things? Adequate public utilities? And is there a pattern of development that has occurred that we either want to continue or we want to stop? And since we've already had residential development in this area, and we have the future land use map that tells us we want to have more residential development in this area, we think number six is answered in the affirmative as well. And number seven, I don't think it fit on the slide, basically says, "It can't be for the benefit of one party solely. Any rezoning can't be for the benefit of one party solely." And so, is there an overall community benefit to this? Staff would contend that all these have been answered in the affirmative, from my staff report in my previous slides. Next slide, please. So, again, you have a staff recommendation here, and I'll just kind of sum up some of those points I made earlier. The request aligns with our precedent, with our recently approved rezonings. The proposed conditions protect our interests as a city and further goals of our comprehensive plan. Staff would recommend approval by this commission as a conditional rezoning to R3. I can answer any questions you might have. I think our city attorney is also on the line and may have a few comments.
Is Chris on?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mark. Roy, can you hear me?
We can. Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address a few things. As set forth in the packet, there were a few documents, and we've received some other emails since the packet was published. There have been inquiries into the legitimacy of the application received in this case. The question is whether the owner of the property desires this rezoning application to move forward. So, I'd like to address just a few legal issues regarding these inquiries. First, Iowa Code Section 364.4 indicates that a city shall substantially comply with a procedure established by state law in exercising a city power. Here, the zoning power. The code section goes on to state that the city may establish its own procedure for exercising this power. Iowa Code Section 362.8 states that the city code, being necessary for public safety and welfare, shall be liberally construed to effectuate its purpose. Iowa Code Section 414.1, the code section relating to zoning, indicates that a zoning power is granted for the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. Couple of court cases are on point or are at issue, I think, in this case. The Iowa Supreme Court indicated in the Quality Refrigerated Services v. City of Spencer case, that a property owner does not have a vested right in continuation of a particular zoning classification. And also, in the Shriver v. City of Okoboji case, the Supreme Court indicated that in reviewing a zoning ordinance, a court is predominantly concerned about the general purpose of the ordinance and not on any hardship that may-
Roy, can you hear me?
-an individual case.
Is that Joe?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Can you still hear me, Roy?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, in this case, the general purpose of City Code Section 111513, regarding who can apply for a zoning amendment, is to ensure that the property is not rezoned if the owner of the property does not want that property to be rezoned, subject, of course, to the city's right to seek a rezoning, which is not at issue in this situation. Most zoning applications received by cities, including Bettendorf, are from a developer or a representative of a party that may hold an option on a piece of property that is subject to that rezoning. So, the key issue is, does the owner of the property desire that this rezoning case move forward? We also need to remember one thing that, Roy, you mentioned at the beginning, which is that P&amp;Z is only a recommending body and not the decision-making entity or body in this case. In this matter, Dick McNamara Construction LLC is the developer of the project on the property proposed to be rezoned, and the owner of the property is Criswell &amp; Forest LLC, which is an entity that we understand to be related to the developer. It's the city's understanding that owner of the property desires that this rezoning case move forward, but due to the inquiries we have received, if a representative of the owner is in the audience, we would ask, or I would ask, that the owner's representative go to the podium and indicate for the record whether the owner of the property is requesting that the rezoning matter in case 22-8 move forward as indicated in the application.
Okay, thanks, Chris. And I see Greg, the attorney for the petitioner, is back at the podium, and he gave me a nod, so I'm assuming Greg was going to make a representation as attorney representing the owner or developer?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Greg Jager. I am an attorney with the Pasternak Law Firm, here tonight representing, Chris has already gone to sit back down. Chris McNamara, Dick McNamara, they are the owners of both Dick McNamara Construction LLC and Criswell &amp; Forest LLC. So, they own both companies. They use the first to do the development work, to take out the permits and that sort of thing. The second is the actual owner. In discussing with the city attorney this very issue, I made an assurance to him that they do indeed want the property rezoned. Rather than have me and Chris both say it, I will say it on behalf of Chris and Dick. Yes, they do want the parcel to be rezoned. Further, for the record, I would say that Lisa Furman did a wonderful job in this particular case. She-
Greg, can you pull that mic up just a little bit, so we can pick you up a little better?
Sure.
Yep.
I wondered about that, but I was told that this new microphone worked perfectly.
Just in case.
Yep. Lisa Furman made a special notation to make sure that the McNamaras did not sign the application until after they actually owned the property. So, they closed on the property in the name of Criswell &amp; Forest LLC, and then they went to the office of Ms. Furman, and they signed the application form. So, it was signed on behalf of the corporation with the authority of the corporation as an owner after they actually owned the property.
Okay, thank you. Chris, any further comment or question based on what the attorney's presented?
No, no further questions for me. I think that does address the issue, which, you know, again, it goes to our city code and who can apply for a zoning amendment. And in this case, it appears that the owner of the property is the property or is the entity requesting the rezoning.
And just to follow up on what you mentioned earlier, I have here in front of me a packet that was presented tonight, which I believe was subsequent informations and publication of the packet we received, its correspondence from Joel Deutsch regarding this case and all his correspondence, since the information included in the packet has been assembled here and will be added and made part of the record as well. So, that will be added. I'll send that down to Lisa, and we'll make sure that's included as part of the record for tonight. Then, Chris, did you have anything else from that standpoint at this stage?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything else to present at this point, or did that cover your-
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. At this point, I would entertain questions and comments from the commission, please. I had one.
Roy, this is Joe. I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Mark, I thought you did a fabulous job explaining the seven criteria. I have a question about one of them, deals in sort of the adequate utilities issue. Received some comments in recent months about the condition of Criswell, and I know there's always discussion about, you know, do you wait for the people to come, or do you improve the roads in anticipation of that? Maybe you could address what the future plans might be for Criswell and how this development might impact that development.
Mr. Chairman, if Brian Freeze, Assistant City Chair, could answer that, he'd probably be best.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I can answer that one. So, just kind of a general layout here for Forest Grove and Criswell, which is what I think you're kind of referencing with your question there. CIP-wise, 2024, we are anticipating improving Criswell at this point. You might remember a similar project along Forest Grove Drive there in 2018. We basically improved that from Middle Road to Criswell, did a seal coat reclamation project there, holding up very well. Did a little widening with that as a result of that. Plan to do the same thing in 2024 along Criswell, extending all the way down to Valley Drive for that. Does that answer your question, or?
Yes. Yes, thank you very much.
Can I piggyback on that question?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
Brian, in the section about thoroughfare, emergency, and pedestrian access, there's a reference to sidewalks on Forest Grove Drive and Criswell that will be placed as reconstruction of these streets is undertaken. So, I would take that to mean if Criswell's being improved in 2024, there'll be sidewalks in conjunction with this development at that time?
We, so I don't know if we would bond for something like that or not, but so the improvement would be similar to what has occurred on Forest Grove. So, we'd still have the open ditches on Criswell as well, so that doesn't typically lend itself well to putting in sidewalks at this time. Sidewalks, I wouldn't think would occur until a later date, until we improve Criswell to say like a curb and gutter section with storm sewer, like you'd see in a typical urban setting. So, I would say probably not, but I would think we would want to try to cover ourselves as far as, you know, making sure that we had-
So, the same question then on Forest Grove.
Okay.
How do you see that progressing as far as sidewalks?
Until we would do improvements to Forest Grove, similar to what we've done, I guess, further west of there, west of Middle Road, and the, I guess, the upcoming project here that will go out for a bid in April, the Phase 3, which basically incorporates federal aid and extends from international to say about 300, 400 feet east of Middle Road. I don't remember the dollar amount of the project there, but we will be basically improving that, similar to what we've done west of there. We would not see any, I guess, improvement as far as sidewalks, per se, from that point east of Middle, where we would stop to Criswell, until we would do an improvement similar to what we've done west of there. We would need federal aid to do that. Local money just would not cover a project of that size. I mean, we're estimating probably around $9 million for a project of that nature, similar to what we've done, I guess, to the west there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Others with the commission with questions?
I have a question about the topography and just how this development would affect the land. Is that south?
South.
Just south, the property owners, the farm and the land just south of this development? I don't see a topography map, so I was just wondering about the grade change and if you knew how that would affect. You're talking about, you know, we want to make sure it's the best plan for everybody surrounding the area, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Orange, I'll do my best to answer that. As some of the slides show, it's relatively flat.
Yeah, it kind of looks like it.
And you can see- You can see some, a little bit of relief towards that southern property. But, you know, as far as like a bunch of grading or changes that would have. A lot of impact on the surrounding properties, it's pretty flat, so I wouldn't see that occurring. I don't have a grading plan. Again, we're not really at the site plan stage. Brian, do you have?
No, I think you've answered the best you could at this point without having, you know, a preliminary engineering plan set, which we would require at the next step. So it's probably about the best best answer we could give you at this point, other than to add to that. I mean. They'll have to provide, you know, detention as they've shown in the southeast corner there. Obviously, all that water would be piped to that location, but they'd have to tie in, you know, to the existing or surrounding property around that. Based on just what they would own, so.
Brian, while we've got you, the comments about the sewer and a lift station potentially in the interim, what would be, where is the sewer today? Sanitary and what would be the anticipated timeframe for potentially a sewer connection versus a gravity sewer versus a lift station?
Well, currently there connecting is certainly an issue. There, I believe, is part of the packet, there was an agreement in there. Where the city was looking to potentially cost share with the developer to carry sanitary sewer. From that property, it carries south along Criswell on the west side, then down to Hopewell. And then stay on the north side of Hopewell to the west to our connection point. It's a, I. Don't have the, basically, if you look at Huntington Meadows and carry that. The west line of that south down to Hopewell, we would tie in at that location. There's a draw there where we have an interceptor. So that would be the the intent. You know, with that improvement, obviously, we would serve a number of other areas that would be probably looking to potentially develop, I would think at some point in the future. So it would serve multiple purposes, which would be the reason for the cost share.
Okay. Any feel, I know this is a conceptual site plan, but any feel for what the berm height would be out there along Forest Grove?
I don't think I have an exact height. I think it's a three to one gradual slope.
Okay.
Exact height I don't have. I don't have a way to really provide it at this point. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, good. So we're others on the commission. Oh, I had one other. Again, conceptual plan, but one of the things we've looked at when we've had some density with driveways and things is the. Parking allowed on the street. So based on this conceptual plan. Would parking be allowed on all these streets or would it be feasible along some of these streets? Is there enough? Parking areas? I know there's a driveway for each unit and we look at that solving it, but. Especially in the area south of the what would be likely commercial area. Is there an ability to park cars between driveways and things? Does it look like it from what we can see here?
Yeah, I think on the single family side, just a little bit of conjecture here, you wouldn't have a problem with parking on the street. With the exception of those dead end turnarounds, which we need to reserve some space there. With the townhome, you have covered parking and driveway parking. Without doing some measurements and working with engineers, I don't know what they would have for space between the lots for parking. Brian, do you want to jump in on that one?
Kind of talking with the city engineer about this a little bit. I don't think we would allow parking. And I guess back to to Mark, we'd have to to review this, but anywhere along the townhome. So for that. Eastern entrance off to Forest Grove there that runs north and south, probably anticipate that would be a no parking zone similar to. Kind of what we've done with the Windmiller development. Between Tanglewood and Tanglefoot Lane there. And then the two east-west legs that extend to Criswell would probably be a similar situation with no parking enforced during winter for snow. Snow removal, that type of thing.
Thank you. Anyone else on the commission? All right, this is when we're going to go back and have the audience provide comment for us on this case. So. Anyone who would be interested in speaking, please go back to the podium. It looks like Greg here first in line.
Thank you, sir. Again, my name is Greg Jager. I'm an attorney with the Pasternak Firm on behalf of the applicant and owner. I appreciate the questions that the commission has raised so far. As you know, this is a concept plan. And we still have to provide preliminary and final plats and all of the engineering drawings, assuming the zoning gets approved. Such things as where the utilities are going to go, the height of the berm, when we can get things moving. All of those will be addressed the next time you see this, when it comes forward as preliminary and final plats. We do expect that this is not going to get all done in one year, but we will. Bring forward a preliminary plat that really lays this stuff out. The engineer, Townsend Engineering is our engineer. They are here tonight. And they have already been directed to start on some of this, so. We're hopeful that the approval process goes our way. And we've already started the engineering in anticipation of it. I did want to take just a moment to talk about the history of this because this is a little unusual. It was on your December agenda, it was on your January, it was on your February, and now it's on March. I got involved in it just almost three or four days in front of the meeting with the neighbors. And that's when we presented the first concept plan to the neighborhood. That concept plan was totally these fourplex units. And they were and remain single elevation, one-story units. I was a little confused looking at the packet. There was at least one page that seemed to have. Two and a half or a three-story unit in it. It was never the developer's intent to do that. Multi-story townhome. Always was and remains single story for these units. When we, and it was a smaller parcel of ground. It was more the first three rows looking left to right as opposed to the entire parcel that you're seeing tonight. And that was brought forward to the neighbors and they raised the types of concerns that you've heard before. They asked about stormwater and we explained that stormwater gets calculated by the engineer and the city's engineer checks it. And we're required to take care of stormwater. In fact, usually these kinds of things make stormwater issues better. Because the city requires the developer to handle not only their own water, but a little bit of the water that's coming in from down upstream. They asked about road capacity. So I'm not a road capacity expert, but I called the city engineer. And I said, what's the road capacity for Criswell? What's the road capacity for Forest Grove? Can these roads handle this kind of development? We were told yes, that it can. The road capacity, the road capacity is such that it is intended to handle development along and both sides of it. We were asked about school capacity. Now, this was a new one to me. There's a new school out there and someone was concerned that the school would be overcrowded if this development were allowed to go forward. So I called the PV School Superintendent and I said, tell me about the school and its capacity. The new school is actually a two-section school. Which means that each grade has two sections of that grade in it. The school is not currently at capacity and can absorb more students. But more than that, this school has been designed to expand up to a four. Classroom capability for each grade. So there is tremendous capacity in the school to accept an increase in enrollment. And the school district expects that there will be an increase in enrollment as this area and the area to the further north develops. So the superintendent indicated to me he had no problem with increased residential development on the south side of Forest Grove. There was also a concern about how the entire parcel would look. And at least one person was concerned about a gas station going in at the corner of Criswell and Forest. As you see tonight's application, we are not asking to change the zoning for that parcel. That's remaining agriculture. We have no plans for any commercial development at that corner. We don't know if or when commercial will come, but it's not a part of this process. We are not putting a gas station anywhere in this in this application. And then lastly, this is the elephant in the room. There were concerns about some of this being rental property and not wanting to have rental property next to. Single-family homeowner occupied to the west. Now, I talked for a long time with your community development director and with your city attorney about that. And under your current city codes, the codes make no distinction at all between rental property and owner-occupied property. What's important is the use of the property. That is Hy-Vee could be owned by Hy-Vee. It could be a site that's rented by Hy-Vee. What's important is that it's a Hy-Vee. It's a grocery store and is a grocery store allowed in that area. So as was described by staff, this is in our three request. It fits within your ULI and the four unit, fourplexes fit within the R three. Whether they are rental or owner-occupied, under your codes and under the the way the city sets it up. Really not a legal issue. Having said that, we were cognizant of what the neighbors said. And so we said, let's pull it back and talk a little bit about how we make an adjustment on that point. That was the second of these three concept plans that you have over the last several months. We came up with a concept plan that put single family, which intended to be owner-occupied, single family. Along the first row. That would be the row against the existing residential and the row across the street. In response to the concern about how the rest of this parcel is going to develop. We sat down and said, well, if we put the single family here, we'd like to do the fourplexes on the rest of the property. And so that was number two. And when that came forward, we got all sorts of comments about density. Perfectly legal, fits the R three, fits your land use plan, all of that, but it's too dense. At that point, we said, all right, let's sit down with staff and try to work something out. That meets not only the concerns of the neighborhood, but still allows appropriate development. And at this point, I need to digress for just a second to talk about McDonald's. There will be some of you on the commission who remember when McDonald's tried to go in at Eighteenth and Fifty-third. And it was a show and a half. Because there was single-family detached residential already in place. And not only was there a problem when McDonald's went in, but there was a problem on the other side of Eighteenth as well. Whenever that commercial was being developed, the single-family detached residential right next to it. Was very upset. Even though it had been zoned commercial, even though the uses are known because the city code is available to anybody. The people who live there were very upset. Ultimately, McDonald's did go in and ultimately they do coexist. But I think there was a lesson that the city learned there. And I think the lesson was, we need not to put single-family detached housing up against commercial property. Which comes to plan number three. We've got two rows now of single-family owner-occupied housing. Where you see these fourplexes is along and adjacent to the commercial zone. Again, we're not, we're not doing a commercial rezoning at this time. We don't have a commercial user in place. But we know that if this residential goes in first. Having it be this type of unit with the potential of it being rental as well as owner-occupied in that area. You're going to see less of a fight when the commercial goes in. It's the buffering that you call for in your comprehensive plan. And we extend that buffering down and cover the stormwater detention area. And because it simply makes sense, you put the fourplex in in a three-row deep as opposed to having a fourplex, single-family and a fourplex. So what we've done now is really try to strike the balance. Between taking care of the needs of the neighbors and making sure that when the commercial goes in at some point. It will go in with a minimum of concern in the neighborhood. Now, as staff recommend, as staff reported to you. We've agreed to increase the buffers, the the rear yard buffer on the west side, the buffer on the north side. We are attempting to make this as compatible and as consistent with the adjoining property. As we think is a very reasonable thing to do. And again, this is a result, this is the third one. This is a result of much discussion with staff and with listening to the neighbors. As staff indicated to you, it's forty-six houses, only nineteen of the fourplexes. And as I said before, we think this is going to be a multi-year project. In short, this proposal addressed the concerns of the neighbors that we heard. It provides increased buffer yard. It provides an overall density of less than four units per acre, which is less than half of what the R three would allow. It doesn't adversely affect schools, roads, or stormwater. And I'm going to plagiarize the words from your staff report for the next item. Because I think they're just as relevant in this residential development as they are in the next residential development. Plagiarizing staff, I admit it wholeheartedly. Staff will note, there is a continuing trend of tremendous buyer demand for homes. And a limited inventory in the region and city. The proposal, now this language is the proposal for your next item, nonetheless, I wish it to apply here as well. The proposal addresses primary goals cited in our comprehensive plan. By providing increased housing variety and attracting young people who are interested in a range of housing options. Those words by staff referring to your comprehensive plan, supporting the next item on your agenda. Apply equally well to this item. Thank you for your attention. On behalf of the applicant and owner, we do ask that we receive a favorable consideration for the rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
The owners are here, they can answer questions, the engineer is here, they can answer technical questions. The technical end of it, we're going to get to it. It'll be part of the planning and the the plating and the. Process and all the other plans that are necessary. But we feel this is a good project and we hope we get support.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for Greg before he steps away? Commission? All right, yes, ma'am. No, but you're at the podium.
I know, she just raised her hand. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Mr. Chairman, I'm Amy Van Horst. We live at the sixty-two thirty Criswell Farm that Jessa was making reference to. I do have a few questions. I don't know if you guys can all answer them. But we'll see what we can get. This kind of starts with the proposed detention area or the retention pond. I guess our question is, is the plan for it to be to have water in it? Is it going to be well-maintained, landscaped? What are the plans for that, since that goes right against our property, which is the small rectangular part right next to the blue line? From the retention.
Amy, would you, would you want us to try and address it as you ask it or answer?
I guess I'll let you guys decide that.
Well, maybe as we go along, so I'll I'll pause you for a second there. And and Brian, maybe you can just talk about our typical standards and requirements for detention, retention. I don't know if this holds water or. Detains it and trickles it out, but.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at this, I mean, our our standard is that for a hundred-year event, we have a five-year pre-developed release. So basically, what that means is that, you know, we're taking the stormwater into the basin. And then we put a restrictor pipe on that and size it so that it releases it at a slower rate or similar to what would be considered a five-year pre-developed storm. As far as whether it is a detention or retention area, whether it would hold water, I would probably refer. probably refer to the developer's engineer. It is shown as detention on here, which would mean it would be a dry basin. But I don't know if that's their intent. Based on what I'm seeing, though, it would be a dry pond unless they would indicate differently.
Ken, is the engineer here could give us a yea or nay based on what you know today? I see Townsend coming up. Not Townsend, somebody with the Townsend churches came up, too.
Mike Richman with Townsend Engineering. Yeah, we have detention on the concept plan, but we're likely going to do retention to act as water quality also, just for spatial considerations, rather than doing bioswales within the subdivision, which is part of the design criteria from the city.
Correct.
Can I, you said retention?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be wet. We don't have water in it.
Okay.
And then, would you be the one that answers whether or not it'll be maintained, landscaped? Will it?
Yeah, it'll probably be owned and maintained by the homeowners association, and the city has minimum standards of maintaining these things. They're inspected and examined for, you know, weeds and so on. So yeah, it's going to be maintained, and it'll look nice with nice landscaping.
The next question I had is more of a statement. We're an active farm at 6230 Criswell. And what that means is that we're a full-blown farm operation. It's very quiet there right now, but during times of the year, we have dryers that run 24 hours a day, augers that are pumping in grain or soybeans into the bins, which are also noisy, as well as large equipment that are in and out all day long. We just want to make sure that anybody who's, you know, developing or coming into that is aware of that. That's not going to change anytime soon, at least not in our plans. So we just want to make sure that we're not getting a lot of noise complaints saying that, you know, our dryer's running in the middle of the night, because it will be, in order to make sure that we can get our crop in and get it dried for the season.
Yep, no, good, good comment.
Okay. One of the other questions that we had was, I think Greg answered it, but I just, I guess I'm still a little hazy on it. Will the single-family homes and townhomes, are they rentals? Are they for sale? Or are they a combination of the two? I guess that's the part I'm still a little, I feel like I know the single-family homes are for sale, but what about these townhomes? Is it a combo? Is it rentals? Is it, what's the plan there?
My name is Chris McTamar. I am the petitioner and the developer. I anticipated questions I thought I would answer at the end, but I think clearly I might need to come, go with some of the answers. So the anticipation is the single-family residential lots will be built as a for-sale product in very similar characteristics to the development to the west. The lots are very similar in size, and the intent there is to sell those to wonderful families that want to live in the area. The side-by-side ranch condos, our intent is a, as a rental product currently with a long-term intent of potentially having them for sale. But our company has worked for a long time in the rental end. We do really high-end luxury rentals in both Davenport and Bettendorf, and we've been very successful with it, and there is a huge demand for it. There is not enough of product out there for people that need it with no steps. And so, the design with the side-by-side ranch condos is intended to fill in a big demand in the city of Bettendorf for that type of product. There was a question from Ms. Van Horst with regards to the detention, and also a question from Commissioner Ormsby with regards to why and how the detention was there. Essentially, the, the landslides to the south and to the southeast. And the detention is placed in the southeast corner for two reasons. One is it's the easiest way to, it'll be a wet area, retention or detention. But the reason why we placed it in that location is because of the way the ground slopes. It's the easiest way to retain the water. But also, we put that in that location because we thought it would be a wonderful buffer between the farmstead and our development. It's a fairly large space that will be landscaped, and it will look beautiful. And so, the intent was to protect the neighbors to the south that have the farm, as well as have the intended use of the development as a need for the retention.
One more, so don't go far. What's the property values that they're expected to be for the homes or the rentals? Was a follow-up to that question.
So the single-family homes that will be for sale will be in fairly similar characteristics to the development to the west. Whether they're ranch or two-story will depend on the market. We plan on building and selling a lot of them, but there's a lot of lots there, and there is a demand for other builders in town to have lots to build on. So we will likely sell to local builders, as well as build and sell houses ourselves in that development, so.
So there'll be some value to those.
And the ranch condos for rent will be in the $2,000-plus range per month. They will be high-end and beautiful. There was a question from one of the commissioners with regards to parking. The garages are 23 feet deep. There's plenty of room for two cars and storage inside the garage. And the driveways are significantly long because of the city streets and the requirement with the city streets. There's plenty of room for four cars to park for each unit without worrying about parking on the street. And we don't anticipate or see an issue with the demand for parking within the, any part of the development.
I think so. So don't go far. I know Greg was referencing a letter, or a, I'm sorry, a meeting with the neighborhood. We were not invited to that or attended that. I'm assuming you met one of the developments. So I guess that was kind of one of my questions is, why weren't we invited? I mean, we're directly impacted by this, so.
I mailed your letter.
We didn't get the letter either, so.
I'm not going to slam the post office, but just for perspective, both Ann and I, we get our packets mailed to us, and it was mailed on Friday, and mine came on Tuesday, and yours came today. And spent $9 to send it to us to go like six blocks. So we've had a lot of issues. In fact, we're talking about skipping the post office and hand-delivering things just because it's been such an issue. But I'm not saying that's the case, but we just lived it this week again, so. Greg?
I think the commission is aware, I think the neighbors are not aware, that what happens in these processes is that we go to the city, and we say, who is it who we should be giving the notice to? And they have a GIS system, and they plot out the distance that is required. We get a list of names and addresses, and that's where we send it out. There are people here who did not get notice. I would believe them to be telling you truthfully they didn't get notice, but I would assume they were outside of the area in which the notice is given under our city code. I'm not sure where you live, for instance, but remember, at the time of the neighborhood meeting, we were talking only about the first third of that current proposal. And so, you would be building your rectangle around that first third, and that would be the neighbors who would be given the notice. There is, and there's another notice procedure, as you're all aware, where you post the signs on the property. And we did do that.
What's the distance?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add some clarity here?
Yeah.
So I think we're talking about a couple different things. Tonight is, in fact, the public hearing for this case. That is what's happening tonight. There has not been a public hearing by the city prior to this. The developer, on their own volition, at their own will, volunteered to have a neighborhood meeting. That's, that's a private meeting of citizens, and that's what they did. Now, we will help them if they want to do that. We will help get names and addresses because we have a system that can generate them. But that is not a, a part of our code or required by the city. We like it when it happens because we think it's, it's the neighborly thing to do. But again, tonight is the public hearing, and those postings of signs and those type of things are for this hearing. A, a private meeting being held prior to this at their own consideration is something else, not part of city code.
Yeah, good, good to point that out. And we have seen the neighborhood, we'll call it unofficial meetings to be very effective. It's a, it's a great way to start the communication, find out where the issues are, help deal with them before they get to staff or as their staff is working through that. So it's a great deal. And I know the, the distance requirements for the code for the formal hearing, like for tonight, it's not that big a distance, right? Is it 250 feet or something?
200 feet.
200 feet. Okay, 200 feet. So it's not a big distance per the code for the official notice, just so you know. That, that's what's provided for. Okay.
And because of those meetings, there have been adjustments in the concept plans already. Is that accurate? Multiple iterations.
That is correct.
Yep. Amy?
Just a couple more questions.
Yeah, no, go, go. You're good.
I think Brian answered this, but the sewer that you spoke about, I think you stated it's coming from Hopewell, so where Hopewell tees into Criswell, is that what you're stating? Then making its way back north?
It would...
Kind of running in front of our farm and across the street, family farm?
No, it would, it would be in the right-of-way on the west side of Criswell, continuing down south to Hopewell, and then east, or I'm sorry, west, towards that intercept or sewer along Hopewell on the north side.
Along Hopewell? Okay. And is that, is that going to impact the greater property of the Van Horst family, the field actually at all?
I, I don't believe it should without looking, having a preliminary set of plans. But no, I wouldn't anticipate that that would happen. It would stay within this development is the way I would see that, that sewer connecting, and then going into city right-of-way.
Because I'm terrible at recognizing like the size of something, when you're talking about that retention pond, what are we saying is like, are you saying that goes the whole length of the farm property, or that goes just for like, if you've been there before, like the trees and the, before it gets to the house? Like, how many feet are we talking? Because that bears on my next question.
Yeah, so the, the retention pond is just under two acres.
Okay.
It runs a pretty significant distance, and with the intent and the understanding that that farm, when the farm and if the farm is developed in the future, how would that street affect the, the existing homestead? And so, the existing street that you see that runs north-south would be, would not affect the homestead.
So that would be on the farm side of it? Okay, okay. So into the field, not the farm itself?
Yep, essentially, at the very, very end where you have some silos, I think, my memory. But it's way back. The retention pond is intended to be a huge, a significant buffer between the, the single-family house that's there and the develop. And so, that's really what is, what it's intending. I know that your family's been there for a long time, and...
At this place for a while, not as long as the other place, but yes.
And so, the thought was, it was a convenient location to put that, as well as have a nice area for you not to have to worry about a development being so close on that. And so, we, we would anticipate that if the land to the south is ever sold and developed as single-family or however it would be developed, that the existing farmstead that's there would stay, knowing that it's a pretty nice and big structure or house that's there. So that was in the thought process on the design also.
And of course, our, my concern was, I don't really need the microphone. My concern and our concern is that people having access into the property itself, we have outbuildings and barns and bins and ladders, and I don't need someone, you know, wandering over and trying to access some of that stuff. So that's what my next question was, will there be a berm or a fence or something? But it sounds like this pond's going to take up that whole area. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're pretty close.
Some of my questions? Yes. I think that's everything I had. Thanks so much.
All right, appreciate it, Amy. Thank you. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir.
Joel Deutsch, 6854 Wellington Court. Couple questions before I start. Mr. Hunt, is there, according to the concept plan, a sidewalk on?
Joel, can we get you a little closer to the mic with the mask? It's hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, great.
Mr. Hunt, is there a, under the concept plan, is there a sidewalk on Forest Grove?
Is there, I couldn't hear, is there a side?
Brian?
Everybody's talking at once. Say that again.
How do you want to handle questions, Mr. Chairman? Do you want to have him give a list of questions to you and have me respond?
Yeah, no, go, go ahead. Yeah, that's all right. You're supposed to direct to me, but...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, please, please, Mark, can you respond to that?
Mr. Chairman. Is there a sidewalk under the concept plan on Forest Grove?
There, there's not at this time.
Doesn't the concept, doesn't the concept plan show it?
I think I've answered the question.
I thought I asked the question.
Yeah, you did. It does not, it does not show a sidewalk in the plan. No.
What is, what is the purple line, then?
I'm assuming it's a...
Mike, Mike Richman with Townsend Engineering. Yes, we show a sidewalk along Forest Grove, which is intended to be future when it is improved from a ditch system. We did not show it on Criswell, which is, we showed it connecting on Forest Grove, but under the conditions of the staff report, we understand that to be a future sidewalk, but it's not labeled as such on the concept plan.
Another question, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Hunt. Why is there a transition zone for multi, for the townhouses for that particular area that is still A1, that's not zoned commercial? My, my assumption is that it is now in the back-room zone commercial.
I think the, this is what the petitioner brought forward. That might be a better question for the petitioner?
Sure. And I think, I think the, based, my understanding, Joel, is because it's shown on the land-use map as neighborhood commercial, it's anticipated that in the future, that would be zoned that, and they're preparing for the future rather than putting single-family up to it and ending up in what he referred, he, Greg, referred to as the McDonald's situation, where you had commercials sitting up against single-family residential.
I understand future, and future is future. It's not, it is A1. It is not zoned for any other classification at the present time. Well, before I start, I'm not waiving my objection to this meeting based on the application that I feel is incorrect. And we've gone, this is the third application before this committee. The first application had to be filed before 12/5/21 for 10-day notices for a hearing that was scheduled for 12/15/21 before this commission. And that particular application was withdrawn. And that particular application, which was approved, but never had, by the planning and zoning department, never before this commission, had 286 units. Now, this is a planning and zoning commi, commission, department for the city of Bettendorf. And if you look, and we're not blind, if you look at the corner of Hopewell and Middle Road, you can see all the way to this particular property. And they're going to put, and they approved to this committee, 286 units. They're going to plop right down at one point. Now, you didn't have that hearing. Then they have the neighborhood meeting. I didn't get notice. I don't know if anyone in my subdivision got notice. The reason, my wife and her friend, someone called them and said there was a meeting. So that meeting was held on 12/9/21. And the application at that point had 286 units. So that particular meeting was canceled apparently because of the weather. And that particular application was 21-091 before this committee. And the next meeting was in January, 1/19/22. 21-091 was withdrawn. And then, we have another application, 22-003. And that apparently shows of record today that it was withdrawn. That particular application had 180 units. And that particular application is really a problem, and this committee should, this, the commission should look into it because, first of all, the signs were issued before the... of all, the signs were issued, uh, before the application was even signed on 1/24/21. The application was signed, uh, after that date. And, uh, in that particular application also, they didn't take any money. They transferred the money from, uh, 21, uh, dash 091 to that application. So I don't know where anyone in that department gets the authority to do things like that. And, uh, then the application again. And what my complaint is about the applications before this, uh, commission, that's all three of them, is that the first two showed the owner as Dick McNamara. He signed, but he didn't own the property. And those particular applications in this third application are under oath. And when you sign something under oath, you sign that it's true and correct to the best of your knowledge. And it wasn't true and best of, to the, their best of their knowledge. And I would assume that the planning and zoning department of the city of Bentendorf knew that when they accepted both those applications. And why they would have even transferred, uh, proceeds from one application withdrawn to another is beyond me. Now, unfortunately, and this committee, uh, the commission knows, I wrote a letter and what my feelings are about these public hearings. They may be public hearings, but they're basically just to sound off and nothing happens. And I may be wrong, but over the last three years, after looking what's happened before this commission, that everything has been approved. And according to my records, there were seven nays and one abstention. So I don't know what's going on, but it appears to me that everything is rubber stamped for the planning and zoning department by this commission. And you're independent. Apparently, and I've read in the records, you've attended Iowa State, uh, uh, continuing education on planning and zoning. And you are to be an independent body. You're, you're our backstop to what is going on with the planning and zoning department. They're not supposed to control you. You're supposed to control them. And you're, you're the backstop that, that would shape the future of this community by, by the rezoning. And when you look at this particular, not only this track, but the, all the tracks there. And there's now a track, there's a single family subdivision going in the middle. But if you look at those tracks, they're single family homes. They're not, uh, townhomes or multifamily. And, but this planning and zoning department believes that, hey, we can just dump right in the, on the outskirts of the city, uh, especially the original plan was 286 units. My God. Now we're, we're down to, to reasonable units. And before I was, maybe it would have been reasonable. But now that I've been told that the plan, that there is no plan for any walks along Forest Grove, then it is a ridiculous situation to have even more density with multifamily, with townhomes. The city has, uh, spent millions on a park in that area. I mean, we, we have blinders. The city has a school there. The city finally put in a walk, uh, to get to the school, uh, after a couple of years and for people to walk their dogs, people to play in the park. And there's only one crossing. And zoning is also part of the police power for the welfare of the citizens. And there is no plans with, for this dense development to allow the people that live there to walk safely to the only crossing there? This is ridiculous. What kind of planning and zoning department or anyone in this city would allow a development to go forward without those kind of, uh, uh, infrastructures? They want someone to run across, uh, Forest Grove and get hit by a car for someone walking their dog or a kid trying to go to school? Believe it or not, I've seen, you know, kids are walking to school from, uh, the subdivision next door with their sidewalks and they're walking their dogs. And yet this planning and zoning department has no consideration for the citizens in that area for their safety. So based on that, to me, any increase in the density beyond R2 should be denied by this commission. It just, it just doesn't make sense regarding your record and what's gone on here, that everything before you is stamped with approval. Maybe in, in this case, you'll look at the whole picture and how it affects the community. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yep.
Could, could I respond to the sidewalk issue?
Yeah, please.
Gentleman brought up. Um, so one thing I would like to point out, and this is a potential, uh, for this development, the, the west leg, um, or access point to Forest Grove Drive there. It is anticipated that we could have a pedestrian crossing at that location at Forest Grove. Also, and that would line up with kind of Nottingham Drive, which is in the Sterling Woods addition there. So I guess looking, uh, kind of a step further and going west to Spring Creek Drive there, uh, the city in its CIP does plan on signalizing that intersection for a crossing specifically for the school and the park there, uh, to make that connection for the pedestrian, um, the pedestrians there for, for those.
It's already had, it already has a signal. So what are you going to do? Put a traffic?
No, that's, that's a, that's a flashing light beacon. Um, and that at, at Spring Creek and Forest Grove would actually move to that Nottingham and west, uh, alignment or entrance there onto Forest Grove to provide pedestrian crossing.
So what are you telling, what are you telling? That there's not going to be these ditches for people to walk in? There's going to be a way of getting?
If we provide, if we, if we provide a crossing at Forest Grove there at the signalized intersection, you have pedestrian access because Sterling Woods, which you live in, along the frontage there does have sidewalk. The school has sidewalk. Uh, Spencer Hollow now has sidewalk. And the school has sidewalk. We also are anticipating, um, or, or trying to plan for, um, with the TBK expansion, I don't know if you're familiar with that, at the northeast corner of Middle and Forest Grove there, to as part of that development, try to make a connection, um, for pedestrians along the north side of Middle there, um, you know, just, just to kind of, I guess, tie that all together.
I understand what you're saying, but when, when is this going to be happen?
2023 for the signalized intersection.
Is it proposed in a budget?
Yes, it is. 2023 for the signalized intersection at Spring Creek Drive and Forest Grove Drive.
And how are they supposed to get to that crossing with no sidewalks?
Well, the, so they would have access on the south side there to the north side across Forest Grove at Nottingham and the west entrance. That's shown right there.
Yep.
We would take those flashing light beacons from the Spring Creek Drive that will now be a signalized intersection and move it to that location would be the intent. Of course, that is, you know, looking at and reviewing the engineering for that, um, as part of the development for the next step in the process. Looking at sightlines and the, the curve at Forest Grove there and making sure that that all works.
So why can't, as part of the development, if, if you're going to ask for that and it's, why can't the developer pay for that?
We didn't say we're, all's we're doing is taking and, and moving material that we have to another location to provide additional safety.
When did this come up?
When did what come up?
When did this plan come up? How long has it been on the books?
Uh, the, the, I found out about the signalized intersection. I know it's in the CIP in, in 2023. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else you're, you're getting at. We're providing the crossing that you're asking for to provide pedestrian safety.
Will that be part of the, uh, would that be required, uh, in any, uh, plat for the subdivision?
At Spring Creek Drive?
At the crossing here?
At the crossing, we will review that at the point we would take the next step, um, with preliminary engineering, yes. I'm not guaranteeing that it would happen. That's the proposal. We have to review that. It's a concept.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Clint Flannan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, kind of piggybacking on that, I am disappointed in the roadways there. I've been a resident for 16 going on 17 years. And when I started this journey, we knew there'd be more housing development out there. We accepted that. But what we heard before the Vetplex was even built was that Forest Grove was, Forest Grove Road was going to be widened. There are going to be a sidewalks, there was going to be a bike path, there's going to be a middle turn lane. That was way back, I don't know, maybe 2006, 2007. I've dealt with three different planning and zoning people to date that I've actually talked on the phone with. And you keep increasing the density, but I see children riding from Hopewell down Chriswell. There's no sidewalk. On Chriswell, there is not even a shoulder for them to go on. They're on open road and we keep increasing the traffic on there. I have no children. My children are grown. But I see these children trying to get from that Hopewell Road over to the Forest Grove. And the best they can do is get on it, that Sterling Wood sidewalks, once they cross the street there. But we keep waiting on these, this road is supposed to happen, these things are supposed, and even the improvement you did, did not address a bike lane, did not address other than the room for the bus. The kids have no place to go unless they get up until either crossing Sterling Woods and take that sidewalk up, or they go through the ditches. And sometimes they're filled with water and a lot of times trash. And in the winter, there's snow. So that, I'm really disappointed that we have not addressed the amount of traffic that is, is generated and the road stays the same. And that road was created for farmers. They used it. And when I moved there, it was nothing to see bikers all the time using it. It was safe. There were, there were the tractors, the cars were cohesively. And now we have divots in Chriswell. We have all these big trucks going there and you pour rock on it and within, I don't know, a week or two, the walks, the rock is just separated. So my understanding was Bentendorf was going to put a bike lane in their roads. And nothing's happened. And every year we get pushed back, but we've got beautiful Vetplex. And it's a nice place and that's great. But we live here. We live here. And I rarely, because there's so much traffic on Forest Grove, I now have to drive from my property to Hopewell and park on one of those little intersection places to walk on that back path. And I love that, that sidewalk. I love it. I can walk all the way from my house, all the way to Devil's Glen, all the way up to Forest Grove as far as the sidewalk goes. And I can go back and then I get back in my car because it's no longer safe for to be walked from my house to Chriswell, just to get that way. And you keep pushing our roads back. And I'd really like to see some action without as much density. Now, what I'm hearing now is we're getting 49 single unit homes and 79 rental units. And my original understanding is they were going to be like the townhouses that are across from Co-Creek Fire Department. But what I heard today is they're not going to be that high allegedly. And I hope that's true. Because aesthetically, that is, if you look at the single family homes, they will be looking, those are the 49 single units, if I'm correct?
I think it's 46, isn't it?
Forty six, oh, sorry.
And then 19 fourplexes, which would be 100 and, or, which would be 46. Sorry, 76 units.
76 rental units is what that will be. You can call them townhouses, but they're rental units. And like I said, allegedly, I was told they were going to be the three story ones that you have on, uh, Middle Road there in Crow Creek. Now aesthetically, I, I feel sorry for the people who live that close because that's what you're going to be looking at. But as far as I'm concerned, we are right. You need to work on the density you're creating there, the safety issues you're creating there. I have not seen more police presence, even though we have more homes. And I think those are the things we need to think about. That's all.
Can we, can we get your address too? I didn't get your address when you came up.
1121 Carriage Place Drive.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, appreciate it. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Paul Van Horst and I live on 18921 Chrisville Street. I'm a, on the east side. And my concern is all this stormwater, I own this property down on the, right there. And all that stormwater is going to be coming down through there. It's not, right now, when blunts have farmed that ground, we get very little runoff of that field. But if we get a four inch rain in a few hours' time, that culvert down through there behind the front of that property and that comes down, I have about a half a mile of waterway there in yards, it's full. And if you add that much stormwater from all that concrete and from the roads there, I know you have a retention pond there, but if that's full and we get a four inch rain, my waterways, they're never going to handle that. So I just hope that whoever designs that, that it can accommodate, because I've lived here about all my life and I've seen some pretty down, pretty good downpours. So I just hope that comes into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name is Dan Huber. I live at 6591 Prairie Grass Lane in Huntington Meadows. So my, my home is immediately abutting, uh, the west part of this, uh, development. I'm part of the Huntington Meadows Neighborhood Association. I, uh, don't want to speak for the association. I'm not the president, I'm just one of the homeowners. Uh, but I have gotten questions from some neighbors that because of spring break and other reasons, couldn't be here tonight. So I have a few, quite a few questions, if that's okay. One of the, one of the questions that comes up with the single family portion of the development is the whole thing is being conditionally rezoned R3. Uh, was there ever any consideration to doing, uh, R2 zoning on the single family portion of the development? And when you do that, are you able to do conditional rezoning within the R2 classification?
I'll defer to Mark on that.
So the question would be basically, can you do conditional rezoning within an R2? That's not what's been presented here tonight, so a bit of a hypothetical, but we have the power to conditional rezone anytime we rezone. So I guess the answer is yes. A conditional rezoning can be for any type of zoning character, any type of zoning district that may come about, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, what have you.
One of the common concerns expressed tonight is the sidewalk situation, uh, especially when you add more density to the area. You know, we, we sort of live in this area that's, was once rural for a very long time and now it's becoming more urban. And yet I think everyone would almost have to admit the infrastructure is behind some of the development, which is not totally uncommon. It's just a very difficult circumstance. I've noticed that when neighborhoods go in, um, including the one north of Huntington Meadows, that there's been sidewalk additions made. Who's responsible for putting in sidewalks, uh, along the major thoroughfares when prop, residential properties abut those major thoroughfares? So for example, the new neighborhood north of Forest Grove sidewalk has been extended there. Is that a city responsibility or is that a developer responsibility?
Brian?
It's the developer's responsibility with the, uh, with the plat.
So why would that not apply here, uh, to Chriswell and Forest Grove?
As I said earlier, it, it would. And we may need to take a, take a look at that. I don't know if that's something, you know, it's really dependent on grades. And as I was explaining to the commission earlier, when you have open ditches, it begets more, it gets more difficult to, uh, put in a sidewalk until that's, until the roadway is improved to, um, more of a curb and gutter section with storm sewer.
Good. So again, I think, I understand the point about the signalized intersection at Spring Creek and moving the, I don't know what the other device is.
Flashing beacons, yep.
Further to the east, but you know, you've got all these, uh, rental units along Chriswell. And so children that are going to be going to that school are going to have to work their way through the neighborhood to find a safe crossing. And we know. And we know what that's like because for a long time there wasn't a sidewalk leading to the new school. And so there was a lot of danger associated with kids walking through these deep ditches, et cetera. I mean, it's, one of the, one of the difficulties of this area is it's not connected to this amazing bike trail system that Bettendorf has. And I, I think we as Huntington Meadows neighbors would urge a couple of things. Well, we got to get this connectivity going. Two, we ought not be doing new development where the sidewalk system doesn't kind of go hand in glove with it for safety reasons. And knowing that there's budget constraints, the sooner we can get at the Forest Grove modernization, I'll call it, where it's no longer a rural cross-section, the better. And I think same is true as Chriswell. When I sit in my kitchen table and I look to my south, kind of southeast, I see the neighbors coming. There's, there's houses going up all along Chriswell. You get near Hopewell, just south of it, there's earth-moving equipment. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out this area is starting to fill in. I just think it's really, really important that the city makes some sort of urgent commitment to upgrading the infrastructure because we can all see this area is, is getting ahead of us pretty rapidly. My understanding with the conditional rezoning is that the developers are going to do what's drawn. And so I'd just like to make a request. I, you know, I, I, I will have a couple, two, three houses ready up, up against my backyard. And I, I plan to do some landscape buffering on my yard so that there's a buffer between us and what, what's coming. I'd like to ask the developers who are going to be selling off the lots to home builders to maybe stipulate in some fashion that, well, first of all, to acknowledge, one, they're, they will be required to put the trees where the trees are drawn, is my understanding. Because it is a conditional rezoning and this illustration becomes part of that. But if we could get some commitment to some, you know, some trees along the back property line so that I have trees and the new neighbors have trees, I think that's a reasonable request. So I'd like, you know, some reaction to the developers on that. And before they come up, if they want to come up and answer that, it's up to them. The, the other thing is the homeowners association for Huntington Meadows restricts rental. And I'm wondering if the homeowners association pertaining to the single family homes could not be organized and make a commitment to not renting out the single family homes. I think it's very important for a lot of reasons that we not leave open the possibility that even more of this development than what's already prescribed as rental become rental. Because then you're going to see a whole host of possibilities, including VRBO or Verbo, Airbnb. And there's really, to my knowledge, no way the city can affect that change, but the developer through a homeowners association might have a pathway to restricting that, just as we have in Huntington Meadows. So those would be two questions that I would have with regard to the single family homes, the buffering and the restricting of rentals. Somebody wants to address those now or later. That's, that's up to them.
Somebody, what's that?
I don't think VRBOs are allowed in the city of Bettendorf.
I, I don't know about the VRBO, but somebody from the developer want to address the question about the trees and the landscaping that's shown on the conceptual plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I didn't kind of see a question to your right there. Just to answer questions about short-term rentals, those things that are sometimes called VRBOs, those type of things, they're actually, we're actually, you served by the state from controlling anything pretty much related to those. So you know, tomorrow, you, Mr. Chairman, could turn your house into a vacation rental home. State law prohibits me from really doing anything about that.
Absent a separate recorded restriction in your HOA documents or something?
Remember, HOAs are private agreements amongst neighbors that we as a city don't, don't involve ourselves in. The only time we're involved in them is we like HOAs to be the owners of land held in common for drainage and, and things like that because we want to have a responsible party to maintain those. But whether something is a rental or is not, or whether it's a short-term rental, like a vacation rental, we don't have the rights or the powers as a city to, to really do anything about that. And it's not something we consider as part of a rezoning or a site plan specifically.
Yeah, requirements related to that. Yep. Greg?
Greg Jager, again attorney of the Pasternak firm, representing the owners on the two questions that are asked. The first, would we want to restrict the use of the individual single-family units? Our inclination is not to do that, not because we're trying to cause problems for adjoining properties, but we think we may be selling these lots. And we think it may be something individual developers will consider as to a material factor in the acquisition price of these lots. So we're not really anxious to do that at this time. As it relates to the landscaping, we had put that in as illustrative as opposed to absolutely determinative. If you look at that plan, what you see are green circles. But they don't say whether there are bavita or three-inch apple trees or sixteen-foot maple. Also, because this is just a concept plan, you don't have any of your utility easements set. And so when I looked at this, I saw green circles that were sitting on property lines. And I saw green circles that may very well be where the utilities have to go. I understand that there's a landscaping plan that's necessary when you bring forward the multifamily unit component. And we're certainly willing to talk to staff about the rest of it. We want this to be a subdivision that fits within the neighborhood. But to, to say, yes, we will do those three in the top left corner, doesn't mean anything. Because what we're agreeing to, because there's no definition there, is it might be a one-foot-tall evergreen. And that is not what the homeowners would be expecting. We think in that context, when you're talking about how it's going to be sighted, how it's going to look, those are the kinds of things that come forward at the time you do your preliminary and final plat. And we are welcome to, anxious to do that at that stage. This is a rezoning. We put the concept plan up because we know there was concerns in the neighborhood. Where are the streets? Where are the houses? All that kind of stuff. And so we've put that up to try and address those concerns. But as for the other, at this point, not as anxious to do it. There are steps down the road where we will talk to staff.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. And, and just to reiterate, and I think that's an important point. You have to keep reminding ourselves, this is just a conceptual plan. And I don't think it was the conceptual to turn into the, the permanent, the concept of it as far as what's single family, what's multifamily, I think is the material component of this layout that needs to survive from the agreement standpoint. As Greg noted, there's practical concerns about vegetation in easement areas, whether it be a drainage easement area between lots, whether it's a utility easement, you can't plant trees and bushes within certain utility easements. And the other would be just the, I'll call it equity. There are no current requirements on the subdivision to the west to have any kind of trees or anything to obscure their houses from the new houses. And it seems it would be unfair to tell the new people coming, you know, somehow maybe your house isn't going to be as good-looking as mine. So I, I want you to have trees. I think the concept is everybody would have the opportunity to landscape their own yards appropriately, rather than putting a burden on either one of the developers to say, oh, you, you got to plant the trees. That's a different scenario. When we have adjoining mixed uses and things like that, where it's really important to define a, or to have a definitive screening between them. Here, when you're single family to single family, that's not typically something we would be requiring. If it were single family to multifamily, that'd be a slightly different discussion. So just a little perspective on that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to apologize. We did have a little bit of a technical difficulty. Our, our city attorney dropped off the call. I'm working on bringing him back in. So that's why we stepped away for a second. And then just, just to maybe inform commission, kind of what my thought is, is zoning administrators that while this is a conceptual plan and I, and I, I see it as that, we do have a little, a little bit more detail to hear than a normal conceptual plan. And we will be checking as we go through this process, should it move beyond today, to make sure that where things are shown, they are there. Now, whether it's the exact specific tree that is drawn on there, I understand that's going to be something that we're going to have to make a staff decision on of, of what that representation means, what, you know, what type of canopy, what type of caliper is it? I understand that, but it is our contention as staff and, and me specifically as a zoning administrator that we see buffered areas with vegetation and we will expect that to be provided.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just hope that I leave the commission with this impression. We're already working on how this gets executed. We're not here blanketly opposing anything and everything. We just are asking questions that are pertinent to, what's this really going to be like? Should you approve it? Should the city council approve it? Should it come to fruition? So a lot of what we talked about in our meetings as neighbors is what are we for? Not just what are we against? And so it, the things I'm asking about with respect to buffering and with respect to how a homeowners association might be used as a tool for restricting the single family homes from being rented, aren't necessarily things the city could stipulate, but the developer could work with us to improve their proposal in a way that satisfies all, all concern. I can tell you it, it would surprise me if the city would really be pleased if we had a lot of single family homes that we all maybe thought were owner-occupied, that were being rented on weekends. I think it opens up a whole host of other issues in terms of public safety, et cetera. And so there, there are ways that things like this can be addressed. I, for example, cannot run out my home by virtue of my homeowners association. I, I realize there's difficulty with the city doing that at, at your level. And I just have one, one final question about the commercial. I, I, until tonight, it didn't dawn on me that that was a, being, you know, dealt with separately. I, I guess I should have realized that. What, what protection is there that, other than the land, land use?
Other than the land, land use.
That's very strange. You're in your own voice back, yeah. That that will in fact, one day be commercial versus another rezoning application coming forward requesting that that be a continuation of the R-three. You know, it's kind of hard to kind of support or stay neutral when you don't see the whole picture. So that one puzzle piece being, remaining agriculture leaves open a whole host of possibilities for alternative rezoning applications down, down the, in the future. Excuse me.
Yeah, Mark?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Huber, I think that's a, a very fair and, and good question. So again, maybe some of the commissioners have heard my, my little speech I'm going to give here. But all these, all these land use decisions, even one we're, we're, have before us tonight, are made upon a continuum. And that continuum goes back to the comprehensive plan process, last updated in two thousand and seventeen. During that update, that corner that you speak of, which is not part of our decision here tonight, I want to stress that, that corner that you speak of was, was designated in the future land use, again, not the zoning, but the future land use, how the land might be used in the future as neighborhood commercial. That is our most lightest commercial district that we have, or most lightest commercial use that we have. So that continuum of decisions started in two thousand and seventeen. And that leads us to cascading decisions. So now we're in neighborhood commercial for future land use. What can neighborhood commercial become as far as a zoning district? And that's really just C-one. Our lightest commercial, I'm sorry, neighborhood commercials, our lightest commercial, drawing a blank. Yeah. So our lightest commercial district, C-one, is all it can become. And then within C-one, we define in our ordinance what those exact uses are. And those uses can include things like office, convenience stores, those type of things, neighborhood uses. If somebody came along and wanted to make that residential, they would have two barriers. The first barrier is they would have to achieve a change to the future land use map. And that would be approved and recommended by this, this commission and then approved at council. Because until that map's changed, you can't access those other zoning districts that are not commercial in nature. So you couldn't go from a future land use of neighborhood commercial to an R designation and zoning. It's not allowed. So you have a protection right now because the future land use map says neighborhood commercial can only become the lightest commercial zoning district. If they were to somehow achieve that, they would then be able to designate it perhaps from neighborhood commercial that if they petitioned, got a land use map change to a R designation and then, or ULI designation, and then you could have a residential use come in. But until that future land use map changes, the zoning that falls underneath it is dedicated, is, is dependent on that future land use map being neighborhood commercial. So you'd have to change the future land use map first before you got to change the zoning to a, another residential use, R-three, R-four, if that makes sense.
Those are my questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Dan, thank you. Appreciate it. You had some good comments and insights. We appreciate that. Thank you. Who's next?
Yeah, Janessa. It was just, one of your concerns I know was about, since your property abuts to theirs. And I know currently the concept plan shows thirty-five-foot rear setback, even though required is only twenty-five, correct? So I was going back over the agreement that is made between the city of Bettendorf and the Macanara Construction LLC in regards to what they're going to keep according to what's on the plan right now. And it mentions materials, but I don't see it on there and some other designations. I don't see it on there. Am I, am I missing it where it says it will stay thirty-five-foot setback as per the current plan?
You mean within, within that, within the conditional agreement?
Yes.
Specifically? I don't think it's in the specific language of the conditional agreement. The agreement pushes back to the drawing or points back to the drawing and that's where we would find that. Find that requirement.
So they are pretty much protected by that with even, even more exception to protecting the neighbors behind them with that additional ten feet in extra barrier space. So hopefully that'll give them some additional comfort.
The agreement doesn't say those words, but the agreement points back to the drawing, which has the, the label of thirty-five feet. And that's what staff would use to evaluate the material connectivity of the two.
Okay. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Yes, sir.
Mike Heeler's, seventy forty-seven Nottingham Lane. I have two things that I'd like some clarification or perhaps it's just a comment about. First is moving the flashing crosswalk light from where it currently is to relocating it to Nottingham Lane. My assumption is, is then where the light, the flashing light currently is, there will be nothing at all. Is that correct or incorrect?
No, that would be a signalized intersection.
Okay. Because you had said you were taking that equipment and moving it to the east.
Yes. And we will actually have a, a signal there.
Okay. So there will be. Okay.
Yes, correct.
The other area that I'd like to discuss or to make a comment on is on the conditional rezoning. I think it would be really wise for the conditional zoning agreement that was just referred to to include what's being presented here tonight as far as representing what those multifamily units will actually be, that they will be single-story, not two or three stories. Because it seems to me that for a lot of people here, it's going to make a, a difference as to how you feel coming away from this, this particular meeting as to whether or not you're going to have a single story or if you're going to have a three-story. And it seems to me that if you're going into an agreement, you should be able to lock that down, saying that any multifamily will only be single-story. And likewise with all of the single-family areas, again, you would look at an agreement or something in the agreement that would say, while there could be changes to that agreement, that will not be less protective, if you will, than what the current conceptualized if you will, than what the current conceptualized drawing shows. Because I remember a number of years ago, I attended a hearing on some rezoning and they were talking about whether or not you had a side load garage or a front load garage. And there were changes made to widths of the lots because of being able to use two side loads that were in effect using the same driveway. And it wound up that that, that never happened. It was, they were all straight in front load garages. And it seems to me that that's a great place to put some protections as to what actually is going to be developed in the future in this area. Because if, if you've got staff working with developers, you've got a situation where maybe the staff thinks that's just, just fine. But I don't know that the neighbors necessarily would. So I would really recommend that any kind of conditional agreement that goes with the zoning would address what actually can be built there and elevations and whether or not you're looking at multi fam, excuse me, not multifamily, but multi-level structures.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. Yes, ma'am.
Sherri Scott. I live at one eight six five nine Criswell Street. I'm halfway between Forest Grove and Valley Drive. Currently live across from where the construction is going on right now. And Criswell is a mess. There's no shoulders. People are driving off the side into our roads. There's divots in the roads. And I'm worried about this construction bringing more of the same and not having the road fixed until 2024 is two more years of the same. A safety issue is one of the things, but it's a disaster. I mean, there's, they've come and they'll, they don't, they'll just repair a patch. But two days later, you know, stuff's still going over it. It's a, a level two road. It's not meant for all of this heavy construction equipment. We've got semis coming up and down it off of the interstate. I don't know if it would help to post weight limits. I mean, I understand there's going to be construction equipment. But in my thought, it makes sense to fix the roads first before you start bringing all this extra construction equipment at the end of the road. And they're going to come up and down Criswell. They do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Troy Guttnick, sixty-eight seventy-one Prairie Grass Lane. And I am the president of the HOA for Huntington Meadows. My question to you would be, is a decision, does a decision have to be made tonight regarding this?
A quick short answer, yes. It's been presented. It's on the agenda and the developers are entitled to a decision. So absent them withdrawing it or someone on the commission asking to defer it or postpone it, table it, it would need action on a presented case. Yes.
Okay. So then to my point then for some things for you all to consider. One, thank you all for your time tonight and your answers have been great. Very informative on things that are going to help that intersection. To give you context to where I live, my house is the corner of Spring Creek and Forest Grove Road. I back up, I have a great view of what happens at that intersection along that street. Any given day, I have a giant picture window to speak to the point of semis, construction vehicles going down the road. And I do have a daughter that attends the new school. So yes, things of safety and that are very, very important to me and to my neighbors who I represent. So as you're taking this into consideration, please, please think of that, think of the traffic, think of the, of the safety issues that a lot of people have brought up. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Derek Deloye and I'm at seventy fifty-four Nottingham Lane. And one of the things that I also have a concern with that I think goes along with the fact of the roads and the sidewalks and what residents are looking at as far as safety out there are the concerns of what is the capacity of emergency support as we continue to add high density in that area? Is Bettendorf at a point where they can support more density out there? Or is the emergency support stressed at this point right now?
Chief?
Uh, thanks for the question. So within the last few years, if, and, and actually I can, and I, Assistant Chief Sayes speak for the fire department, but there's been a, a recognition of obviously the city growing at the fastest pace to the north and east. Correct? And, and so the city, just with this in this last budget planning session and everything, within the last two years, the city council has authorized a total of six new police officers, three from last year and three for this upcoming fiscal year. With just this in mind, as our, our city does grow and expand quickly. And I'll let Assistant Chief Sayes speak for the fire department because I know there's been a lot of hiring and manpower levels increased. So go ahead.
Right. To speak with that, we are planning on hiring three more firefighters in July of this year. And they will be stationed out at station four, which is Coak Creek for that. And then the intent is to hire three more the following year. So we will have full staffing out there. We have two staffed out there 24/7 right now, along with our bunker program and volunteers. So.
Okay. I just know that the development out there, I mean, I'm an advocate for the development out there. And with new homes going out there, I have two younger daughters myself that have not gotten to the age of attending the new school, but they will be. And so I just am a concerned resident out there that wants to make sure that as we continue to add density, that we have the support. And I'm also, you know, a fan of my tax dollars going to the support of the emergency crew that, you know, provides us the help out there as well. So.
Yep. Thanks. Appreciate it.
And, and thank you for that. And I will just tell you, if, if you do follow the city, the, the city council and the mayor and everybody is, we are very in tune. And this is a very supportive city and city council when it comes to public safety. And, and we've, that's been a priority these last few years. So thank you.
And it, one of the realities is, and, and maybe Sterling Woods out there is a perfect example. I've lived in town twenty-four, five years and it was out there. I mean, it's, it's been out there forever and it, it was out there by itself. And, you know, you, then something else pops up next to it. And then something else pops up to it to spin kind of hopscotch out. There's, there's not been a perfect progression of, you start at middle road and it goes one, two, three, four, and works its way out. It's pots that have developed out there and it becomes very difficult to put all the structure in at the same timeframe that all the growth occurs in an irregular manner out there. So it doesn't help the immediate issue of yes, there's, there's safety concerns by everybody, but recognize that the city is very proactive in its approach and will try and do the right thing. But some of it's very difficult with the chicken and egg challenge. So. Yep. Anyone else with regard to this case? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Stimson. I live at sixty-seven twenty-three Joseph Way. Our house backs up to Forest Grove, right by Spring Creek. And I guess I'm wondering is when was the traffic study done for that Forest Grove? What year? Cause I've not seen anything that looks like a traffic study going on to me.
So I guess I could probably hopefully shed some light on that. So in 2020, Bay State Regional Commission did traffic counts out there along Forest Grove. They estimated there were fifty-four hundred vehicles per day traveling along Forest Grove there. They're also projecting in 2030 that that would increase to seventy-one hundred vehicles per day. For the planning capacity for like a two lane arterial, which is what Forest Grove is considered right now, it can handle up to 10,000 vehicles per day. So I know a lot of the questions with roadway improvements and, and things have come up, but the traffic counts and, and funding do drive those, do drive that improvement.
Okay. And I guess what is the response time for fire and ambulance when there's an issue over at the elderly or the housing that's over there by the roundabout? If we have an issue going on over at our part? I mean, and you also have now the Bedplex and the, the expansion of that. How far do you have to go before you decide another fire station is needed?
So in our last meetings for strategic planning, we are talking about a station number five out in that area. I know the city owns land out there. It hasn't been anything set in stone yet, but they are considering that. And the city does see how fast the, the city is growing out in that neighborhood. So they, they see a need for it. So we are discussing it.
Okay. And I would like to request that we have more police patrol that section of Forest Grove. We see a lot of traffic and it's nothing close to the speed limit. So we'll see somebody periodically and then we don't see anybody for weeks. So I, I request that. So that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Last call in the audience for this matter? We got, we got three or four?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Purcell. I live at one eight seven two one Criswell, in between all these guys. I wanted to know what Criswell is. Is that a secondary road? And does that have a weight limit on it? Because there is more dead gum, cement trucks, tanker trucks, semis, bigger than they need to be on that road and people walk it all the time. They're on their bikes all the time and it gets narrower down by the church. And someone's going to get hurt. And I don't think those, I don't think some of that stuff is even legal if that's a secondary road to be on there.
I'd have to look at the designation on that. I, I am not sure if it's a collector or an arterial. I would lean towards probably collector at this point. Could sometime, at some point in the future, based on traffic, you know, change that designation. But as far as weight limit, there are no restrictions. We also have farm equipment and things like that that, you know, also needs to utilize. And I understand the construction equipment. That's been a, a common concern.
I understand farm equipment, but tanker trucks and semis and stuff. They never used to come up that road. Now they do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Marlena Hammond Zailers and I live at seventy forty-seven Nottingham Lane. And mostly I just have a couple of questions and a comment. My first question has to do with the retention pond. I'm just curious. What is done, if anything, for mosquito control in these retention ponds?
Brian?
I might be able to answer that. It depends. And this might go to the developer's engineer, but typically to handle something like that, a lot of times we look at an iteration system or something along those lines, which, you know, might be part of, or a request for their, their plan. I don't know if we would require those or not, but maybe something to take into consideration as we're moving forward.
Okay. Do you have, do you have any intention of?
You spoke correctly.
Okay, good. And my next question is for Mr. Jaeger or my series of questions. Maybe one is directed more toward the city. How many new units are built there around the south of Forest Grove? How many new units are coming in? I'm just curious.
Be a little more, more specific on which area you're talking about.
Okay. Say, let's say the area from where we have Forest Grove down along Criswell and other areas to Hopewell. How many new units?
Platted lots, maybe I, I don't, I know there's some new subdivisions on Hopewell. There's another one that runs between Forest Grove and Hopewell that's platted out there. I don't have a count. Do you, Mark, you know what kind of total platted lots that have been?
I don't. I would have to do some analysis that, I mean, obviously that area is designated for, you know, in the future land use map again, for ULI or UMI, depending on where you're at. I don't have, you know, cases that I know that are coming immediately for those areas. But, you know, I, I would have to do some type of analysis. I just don't have that.
He just pulled up the one I was thinking of that runs, it's kind of long and narrow. It runs between Hopewell and Forest Grove, west of this, this kind of area. And then you've got some other subdivisions south of Hopewell. Are there some others platted like at Hopewell and Criswell? I don't see anything showing up over there.
Right.
Chairman, I'll, I'll note the plats shown on, or the parcels shown on this map are from the county assessor's office and they are up to date as far as what's been approved by council for final plot.
Okay.
And then following that, my question is for Mr. Jaeger. When you spoke with Mr. Struce, the superintendent of Pleasant Valley Schools, were you able to give him the number of units that were being constructed when you talked about additional students?
Again, Greg Jaeger, attorney of the Pasternak firm for the owners and applicants. When I talked to the superintendent, we had a nice conversation, twenty, twenty, twenty-two minutes maybe. Talked about the area generally, said my client was looking to purchase the entire area that's now being asked to be rezoned. Said we were looking at various scenarios, one of which was the fourplexes. Was that going to cause a problem? He indicated it's a new school. It's not at capacity. Two sections each grade has the ability to go to four sections. He indicated he was not concerned and he fully expected residential in that area as well as residential to the south, as well as residential going in the other directions as well. Did I give him a precise number? I don't recall that I did, but I told him generally what the owner and applicant were thinking about.
And just in, in other interactions we've had relative to the school district, my understanding, and somebody else clarify me if I'm off on this, but that whole school project out there in Forest Grove was pulled forward on the timeline because of the other growth that had happened out there. And the same phenomenon kind of happened on the school, on Hopewell School. It was put in and I think it's been expanded two or three times as the growth has occurred around there. So they were designed, as noted, to be expanded and they are anticipating significant growth. That is the key growth area, that northeast area of Bettendorf. So I know that they're, without specific numbers geared up for future increases in students out there.
Okay. Well, I was just doing some calculating and of course it is a guesstimate, but just anticipating that we have a couple of kids from every, you know, unit there that it would probably take up, assuming, and I don't know what the current ratio. It's been a while since my children were in Pleasant Valley Schools, but I'm assuming that they don't have any more than twenty-five kids in a classroom. And if they, if they had an increase just in two hundred and twenty-eight students, that's roughly assuming that you have a couple per unit. And we all know that that's probably an overestimation. But that comes to about two hundred and twenty-eight children. And then you divide that by twenty-five and you come up with ten additional classes. And I'm also assuming that when he talks about expansion to double that, that if you have two more expansions for the six grades, then that would take up roughly twenty-four new classrooms. And just by going with the, the number that I came up with from these multi-unit houses, that ten of those classrooms would already kind of be spoken for. And that would only leave fourteen more. And that's why I was trying to get a feel for how many other high density units were going in south of there to find out if the school would indeed be really overcrowded. But I think that that's something that maybe needs to be clarified a little bit more. Without definite figures, it's a little hard for people to assess if there's going to be enough room in, in the school. And the last comment I have has to do with Forest Grove Road. I don't know how many of you on the council or whatever live there that have to travel Forest Grove Grove regularly. But I've been traveling it for the last, what, thirty years, I think. And it's very, very difficult these days to get out, especially at Middle Road and Forest Grove. If you have someone in front of you with a truck and a trailer, you can, you, you would be lucky to get a couple more cars after a truck and trailer through there if you were heading to the west on Forest Grove. Because the light is, I don't know if it's a problem with the light or simply a traffic problem. And I would really beg slash encourage you to do another traffic study in that area. Because I know many times if people are getting out or trying to get out when the high school is in session and all the kids are driving their cars, plus you add to that the elementary school. It really has, is really quite a burden to get out of there. And I don't know, just looking at the, I haven't done any measurements or anything like that. I don't know. You know, you talk about Forest Grove turning into three lanes, you know, one going in each direction and then kind of a turning lane. But I'm not sure if you have much traffic there from Chriswell that's trying to get out in that direction. I almost would beg you to look at four lanes. Because, and yet, you know, it's such a small area that you have to work with. Could you even get four lanes in? But that's just, that's just my comment and please do something for the, the residents. Thank you.
Yeah. And Middle Road and Forest, and Brian, maybe just touching that, that's part of a pending redevelopment, a roundabout, as I understand it. Will be put in there to help alleviate all that and keep it moving.
Absolutely. That's absolutely correct. That project should be bid here in April with the assistance of federal aid through the state. That will basically start about international there to the west of Middle and extend just east of Middle, about 300 to 400 feet there with those improvements. There'll be a, a series of roundabouts, one at Middle, one at Championship and Forest Grove, and then one at Competition Drive in Middle as well. That project we would hope would take about a year and hopefully be done by the end of the year. Maybe into, a little bit into next year.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sandy Van Horst and I live on Chriswell Street. And I just have a problem with the commercial area that you have zoned for that. I think we have enough commercial already up by the Betplex. And we really don't want to see any commercial in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's not zoned that way today. It's still zoned ag, but it's on the land use plan and has been probably for the last five years and maybe before that. But one of the reasons, I think, if you look at the rationale for why is it on there is as those areas grow, the neighborhood kind of demands some kind of services area rather than you have to drive somewhere to it. There is a lot of intensity over at the Middle Road entrance, but that's kind of like normal planning that you go a mile and a half or two and then you've got a bunch of houses and they like the convenience of something close. So it's not illogical, but that is land use, not zone, and it still has to go through all that process that Greg talked about or Mark talked about earlier. So.
I would just like to add to that. Between my neighborhood and your neighborhood, we have light resident or light commercial. And what we have there is donut shop and kitchen and bath and just, I mean, it's light commercial. So I think maybe you can feel a little more comfortable knowing that.
No, we don't want that.
A neighborhood commercial, it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to be.
Not a gas station necessarily.
You don't like donuts? You don't like donuts?
We just want our party to stay the way it is.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. All right. Appreciate the comments. Anyone else? Last call for, okay, we got one more. You're my last one.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. My name is Chris McNamara and I am the developer. I grew up in Bettendorf. I lived here my entire life and I have a vested interest in the city. We have shown on the plan what we intend to build. We have shared with the neighbors what our intent was and listened to what their concerns were and made significant changes as we listened to what was important to them. And there have, I just want to address one or two things about the, the ranch condos that we have proposed. We specifically have talked with the city about the conditional zoning to show what we have on the plan, which we have drawn out the ranch condos. And so our intent is to do ranch condos as shown, specifically drawn out on the plan to the, to the foot. And don't intend to do anything any different than that as we've, as we've presented to the city. We don't do short-term rentals. We don't have any. We rent to really exceptional neighbors within Bettendorf. And oftentimes they end up buying houses in the neighborhoods that people live in, in the area. And on an overall basis, I drive by this land daily. And our hope and our intent and our, our design, assuming that we get a favorable agreement from the city is to build something that we would be proud of and everybody in the neighborhood would be proud of. I'm happy to answer any questions of the commissioners if we've missed any that they have. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Last call for any questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll come back to the commission then.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 22-008, subject to staff recommendations. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22008. Any discussion on the motion or the second?
All right. I'll just comment that I think the staff's done a good job here. And despite some folks that think there's a lot of shady things going on, the staff does a good job of making sure that by the time things get to these meetings, they've been beaten up really good so that you get a project like this that's considerably less dense than where it started. There's, there is a reason that a lot of times things co-sail right through here and that is because of the staff and the wonderful job they do of working with the developers. A lot of times with the community to make sure that what we see is worth approving.
Yeah. Thank you. Good point. Yep.
I would, if I could just add a comment, Roy, I, I agree very much with Scott. I know emotions can run high on these issues, but we, we are an independent body and consider the overall needs of the city. And I'm sure a lot of our votes are unanimous, but that's reflects, I think, as Scott said, the good work that our staff does and the thoroughness in which they prepare these documents. I, I'd also want to comment on the, on the ranch condominium issue. That was the subject of a lot of comments this evening. I, I would just agree with the fact that I think there is a shortage of that type of housing in this community. And it's very consistent with the city's desire to have more diverse housing types. So that's all I have, Roy. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Joan. Appreciate it. And I, I would make my own comments along those lines. We, we are truly independent. We try very hard to, and part of the diversity of the group is, is diversity of opinion and perspective. And, and we, we struggle back and forth a lot amongst each other and staff does, does, does an excellent job. I don't want to say shielding us from things, but three iterations before this officially came in front of the, the public and us. And Greg, I think it was the attorney for the applicant, made reference to the McDonald's deal. And I'll say, there's an example of probably two or three pauses where it's like, this is completely unacceptable, can't do it, but it's legal, but you still can't, you can't make it work. And between the neighborhood and the developer and the corporation went back and forth. The record may not reflect that. It was all yays and no nays, but the, the reality was it was deferred two or three times.
There was one.
There was one. He happened, he happened, I'd be sitting next to me. Maybe that's one of the seven, but that was years ago. So I don't want to leave anybody with the implication that we are a puppet board for some deep state theory of, of conspiracy by the staff. It's absolutely not the case, even though somebody may want to make it look like that. So not the case. And I'll take that challenge with anybody that wants to bring that up. So I've been doing this for 14 or 15 years and I'll, I'll take any challenge anybody wants to bring in that, in that venue. So I think it's a, it's a workable plan. It's single family against single family. There is a multi-family factor on it at $2,000 a month. I don't think we have to worry about the typical perception of a rental challenge. That is a strong rent, far more than what I paid in many of my mortgages over the years. So and I am saying too, that if it had been multi-story, I would not be in favor, which I am of this plan. I would have opposed it as well because that was incongruent with what's happening in the neighborhood for single-family adjacent owners out there and open spaces that don't like donuts, no offense. But I get it. You, you have a nice area out there. You want to keep it open and, and I think this still maintains the flavor of that neighborhood and a multi-story unit frankly would, would not have fit and I would have opposed that. So for all those reasons and concepts, I will be voting for it. And I think it's important for everybody in the audience to understand kind of where we come from and where I come from. So that would be my component. Any other thoughts before we go for a vote? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22008, subject to staff recommendations. And the comments we have regarding the development agreement will be incorporated, obviously. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Thank you. 22008 is recommended for approval to the city council. Next case, please. And for those of you leaving, thank you for attending. We do value your input and participation. Someone's a dinner break. Who's buying?
Pizza.
All right. Go ahead. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead.
Next two cases before you, case 22006 and 22007 are related. Case 22006 is the planned unit development revocation on 1200 Devil's Glen Road. So as mentioned, case 22006 and 22007 are related. They both relate to the site of 1200 Devil's Glen Road. The current site is zoned as a planned unit development. This planned unit development was approved by city council in the 1970s. It has since, that, that planned unit development was not developed. And so has been in fact void for that many years. The applicant, the city is requesting, the staff requesting the commission revoke the PUD at this site. I have an aerial shown on screen of the site. It's located off of Devil's Glen Road and Duck Creek. It contains Duck Creek bike path that runs through the property. The show, the current zoning is shown as the planned, the planned unit development. It was never developed. Council and the commission's recommendation has the power to revoke said developments after two years if they are not developed. In this case, it's been 50 years. Just for posterity, this is the planned unit development that was proposed at the site. It involved 24 townhomes with an entrance off of Duck Creek Road. Or has Duck Creek, sorry, Devil's Glen Road with Duck Creek running through it. Here's some elevation drawings showing the multi-story townhomes with three bedrooms, kitchen and a garage at ground level. This site, as mentioned in our previous case, our future land use map is contemplated as urban medium intensity. Urban medium intensity allows a variety of different uses, both in residential and commercial. The surrounding land uses are urban low intensity, urban medium intensity across the street, which is a mobile home park. And then our parks and open spates, which is a Duck Creek park. Prior to the PUD, this property was zoned R1, so staff is recommending reverting the PUD to its R1 status. We also, staff contends that the land, the zoning surrounding this property is also R1. So this would prepare the property for a future of development proposals that would be reviewed separately by this commission. Having that said, the staff recommends approval of the revocation of the Duck Creek Development Plan, Unit Development Plan, located at 1200 Devil's Glen Road and reverting said property to the R1 single-family zoning district. Are there any questions?
Questions and comments from the commission, please. And I know you had one.
I do have one.
Zoning map.
Zoning map?
Mm-hmm. There you go.
The, the trailer park is zoned A1.
So the trailer park was, has existed since prior to this planned unit development. I have found the research, it was in the 60s, I believe. So it's grandfathered into an A1 district. The use is a mobile home park. So that's.
I was just surprised when I saw it.
It's a zoning district, but not the, at current use being observed there.
So here's my question. I'm going to try to be specific. It appears to me that there's been an industrial usage there. I've heard that term used in reference to this particular parcel. But we're looking at returning it to its original use, which I don't see how that necessarily correlates to what's happening now. And how does that all fit together? Or maybe I should say, how does it come apart?
Well, Taylor's worked this case, so I'd like him to start and I'll jump in to help him if he needs to.
Sure. The industrial use, so the, the planned unit development is a, we still have that available as a, for a developer to rezone a property. It comes in as a specific plan, concept plan and, and more like a site plan, all in the same level. I think you guys are familiar with that. That was approved and never developed. I think the property then changed hands in the late 1970s and was used as an industrial site by the current owner, which is Quad City Industrial Maintenance LLC. That use continued until recently. There was a, I believe, a fire at the property and there used to be a single-family home and an office located in that structure. That is no more. That has been demolished. So staff will contend the use now is abandoned for that. The underlying zoning had never changed. And we do have existing other PUDs in the, in the city that similar, similar situation. I can go back to the TBK development expansion. Their PUD existed there. There was an ag use happening there the whole time and I think it was approved in the 1960s as well. So by changing the zoning, it's getting into conformity. The use at the site would be, is currently outdoors. I don't know what you'd consider outdoor storage. There's some, there's a barn there. But the business aspect of it has been, there's no office there anymore.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I add just a little bit of detail? I think that was a great answer and the, and the history work that Taylor and Greg Beck have done to research this property is really amazing. So the city probably has a little bit of cleanup here to do, if you will. We should not have PUDs that are not developed, remaining on the books after their expiration period. And so we, we probably need to address that. This was brought to our attention because of a petition to develop the property. So then we kind of became aware of, hey, somewhere along the ball, along the way the ball got dropped and this, this change wasn't made. So I might ask the commission to separate in their mind the request for the revocation of the PUD away from, if you will, the petition to develop the property for a minute. Cause I think that's something we just need to fix. We don't want to have zoning districts that aren't compliant, aren't existing, aren't developed the way they're supposed to be. I would also contend as a zoning administrator that the use occurring at that property is illegal and non-conforming. That use is, is not appropriate, is not allowed. And there are some code enforcement activity going on in that property. Now we, I will tell you that the owners of the property are very willing to work with us and they're trying to resolve this issue. They have an individual or individuals maybe that have occupied the property and, and they're being asked to leave. And, and I think that's going to help take care of some of those uses. So I certainly don't want to disparage anybody on the ownership side because they're actually working with the city and have been proactive with us trying to get those issues resolved. And we do appreciate that. We do need to clean up the issue. We need to have the report. resolved. And we do appreciate that. We do need to clean up the issue. We need to have the appropriate zoning. Staff's consideration is, recommendation is, is that you take away the PUD because it never got developed and shouldn't be there. And you throw it back to, I believe in R1 classification is our recommendation. And then get it back to, back to good, back to where it should be.
Which is where we want it to be.
Yeah, back to where it should be and then consider separately the petition. I know Mr. Curran's on the line. I know he is listening from vacation. So I'm not sure if he's, if he's still on the line, but he may have some other more legal clarification that he can provide beyond what I've just stated here.
He's on mute.
Yeah.
There he is.
I, I, hello. Yeah, this is Chris. I am calling from, from San Diego where I understand it's the same temperature as, as you have there in Bettendorf. But I think Mark has clarified the issues well. And I think separating the, the issue of the PUD revocation from the, the rezoning is, is a, is kind of a critical point. Getting rid of these old PUDs that just never developed is, is an important issue for us to address here in the, in the future. And we've got this one at, before us. And I think that separating the, those two issues is, is critical. And then you'll go through your normal analysis as you always do with, with the rezoning question.
Chris, this is Roy. So, so the, I get the concept of essentially dissolving the previous PUD for all the right, right reasons. The, the non-illegal, non-conforming use matter is not addressed or attended to by any means in that. It's, the use is what the use is and that's a separate matter. We don't lose any of the teeth with the illegal, non-conforming use matter by changing it to, to the R1. And then we've got, as you note, the other matter coming up on whether it wants to be R4.
That's correct. Yes.
So if, if, if I can jump in, Mr. Chairman, if the owner were not successful in, in dealing with the party that's currently occupying the property, even if we change the zoning, my code enforcement division would still be seeking to have that use removed. And, and the ownership, again, has been working with us, keeping us almost daily up to date on what they're doing from a legal aspect to remove those individuals and those things that are there.
Okay, good. Thank you. Chris, anything else from your perspective?
No, not, not at this time.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 22-006.
Did we ask the
No, we didn't.
Audience. We need to ask the audience. So there's, there's apparently no further question or comment with regard to the removal. This is right now, just the removal of the existing 1970s PUD. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us in that regard? Nope. All right, now we're gonna go.
All right.
Yep. So we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second to approve case 2206, revocation of Duck Creek Development Plan Unit Development Plan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Case 22006 is recommended for approval to city council. Taylor?
All right. Next case on the agenda is 22007, which is, involves the same site, 1200 Devil's Glen Road. The applicant is David Kempin. He is requesting the pending approval of R1 zoning to be then rezoned to R4. I have a zoomed in aerial of the site and you can see some of those that, that use occurring there currently. As mentioned, this is the former site of Quad Cities Industrial Maintenance and Construction. There's some more history in the site about the single family dwelling, which caught fire and was demolished in 2021, and the non-conforming uses that are illegal, non-conforming uses that are occurring there. As the request is to zone to R4, current zoning pending the PD is R1 and surrounded by R1 to the southwest and north. Across the street, we have A1 zoning, which is the mobile home park and the park and the Duck Creek Park, which is technically zoned A1 as well. The current or the future land use map designation for the property is UMI or Urban Medium Intensity. The surrounding land uses are urban low intensity to the southwest and north. And then across the street, the mobile home park is designated as Urban Medium Intensity and the Duck Creek Park as designated as Parks and Open Space. Urban Medium Intensity content is contemplated for R1 through R5 districts in our current zoning code. So it's important to remember that. Other considers, considerations, we consider the comprehensive plan, compliance consistency when we look at rezonings. A number of goals are addressed with this rezoning. Develop new land streets, provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods, enhance community care, design and character, promote recreational and cultural activity and attract young people. And staff contends the proposal would be benefit the public and not negatively affect surrounding properties. Let me move on to the actual site plan here. The proposal is three or four three-story structures containing 146 units. Each structure would contain between 32 and 38 units. And the analysis of this concept, the R4 district allows 20 or 2,500 square feet of development area per unit. So running that calculation, this proposal would equal 2,978 square feet per unit. So it meets that threshold for density. Looking at other developments around the city, this is a comparable to the Bettendorf Regency Development, also located off of Devil's Glen Road, closer, farther than north. One access is shown off of Devil's Glen Road. This is pending a final location, the final location is pending a traffic study, which is being required by our, by staff due to the topography on Devil's Glen Road. The site has ample access to all utility connections. On-site parking is shown. It hasn't been analyzed yet. That would occur at site plan stage, but does include a mixture of ground level garages and a parking lot. The concept is, does show a 35-foot front yard setback with a landscape berm for a majority of the frontage along Devil, Devil's Glen Road. And then the remainder to the north is a 50-foot setback without a landscape berm. Snow and trash would be provided by the owner. This is, there's no public roads going on this property. And then sidewalks do exist along Devil's Glen Road and connect to the bike path. This is an aerial showing the footprints of the proposal. I will cover some of the current encumbrances that exist on the property regarding easements, floodplain, and a city-owned parcel. But as shown, the foot, the footprints of the building are outside of the floodplain. They kind of are, they're positioned on a ridge, plateau per se. Three buildings along the bluff here and then the fourth building up here. As mentioned, there's a current, traffic study is currently being required to be conducted for the positioning or the location of the entrance and any sight lines or maybe possible turn lanes to be implemented due to, due to sight lines. The floor plan concept is shown, it's ranging, they range from studio size to three bedrooms. There's also garage level, ground level garages, which are accessible, some are accessible directly to those units and some can be accessed via corridor. Say if you live on the third story, you'd access them via stairs. All units show balcony. Here's another interior concept provided by the developer. Some of the amenities shown. This is the facade concept. 5725 Brady Street is a similar development, which the, which has been brought into the concept. That development is called the Reserve at City's Edge. It's also, I would note, it's also located along Goose Creek, similar to Duck Creek. And also it will be the site, I'm going to, future proposed extension of the Goose Creek Bike Trail. Some more, and feel free to, we can go back to any of these slides. There's a number of slides. Some more elevation drawings showing the balconies, the garage entrances, the common entrances to the apartment structure. The referenced similar concept development at 5725 Brady Street, Reserve at City's Edge. This is just an aerial of that. It was recently built, I believe is approved in the last few, couple of years. And you can see thitters, we have Goose Creek here, the apartment units with one interior, with one access. So it's very similar concept, not the same scale. I want to revert back to the, to address some of the current encumbrances on the property. Currently, the city of Bettendorf actually owns a parcel, which is contemplated in the proposal. This parcel was the, contains sewer mains and was the, it might have had it, been the location of a past structure that the city owned. No longer, there's no longer a structure there. The city staff would recommend the future disposal of this property for the developer, to the developer. And then we'd also put any easements required for those sewer mains that exist. We would, we'd need to dedicate those easements. Here are the sewer mains in reference. So you can see the property, the outline of the property, and these are the sewer mains for the referenced easements. And these are the recorded easements currently on the property regarding just the sewer. So there's, we, not only do we own a parcel, we also have additional sewer easements.
Hey, Taylor, I'm sorry, could you go back one slide?
Sure.
Just so that everybody in the audience and the commissioners understand, the parcel that you're talking about that would be vacated is that key shaped piece. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you saw, there's a lot of lines going on. I want to make sure you saw that. That key shaped piece would be the piece that we no longer need, no longer use.
Yep. As noted, the city of Bettendorf is current deed holder of that parcel. So that's one part of, that would need to happen for this proposal to go forward. There exists another easement on the property, which actually is overlay, overlays the sewer easements. And this occurred in 1999 and related to the installation of and construction of the bike path. It's a bike, it's, it's noted as a bike path pack, bike path access easement. It's a lot larger than the bike path and probably covers a lot of ground. But I'm guessing that relates to the current floodplain of the property. So we have a number of, a number of encumbrances, like I mentioned, that restrict development on these areas of the property. The current floodplain, as shown, would restrict or would prohibit the proposed concept. There's currently a floodway that goes, which we do not allow any development in, and a 100-year floodplain that covers the majority of the property. Having said that, FEMA has proposed and issued preliminary flood maps. These maps may not become effective till 2023, but in the past, when, once preliminary maps are issued, pending any appeals for those maps, they do become effective. And this occurs every so often, few years or 10 years, depending. I believe the current maps incorporate new hydraulic models. So they are lowering the floodplain quite a bit here from four to five feet. That will open up a large area that the proposal locates some buildings in. Prior to this date, the applicant would have to adhere to the currently adopted flood maps, which are shown here, pending any application to FEMA to remove that floodplain. So at the earliest would be 2023, pending any type of other authorization by FEMA through the applicant. So we have a city property, sewer easements, a bike path easement, and a floodplain, all to consider here. But as shown on this map, this is the future flood, floodplain line. The sewer lines are shown here as well. That's the city property. If, if disposed and considered into the development, the proposal would, would be allowed by our ordinance. I just wanted to, I did take a few site photos. This is the current condition of the property and what's going on there. This development would encourage, I think, we are working with, as Mark mentioned, working with the owners of the property to alleviate the illegal non-conformities occurring. So this is what's been occurring for, since, for quite some time. This is a view coming on the bike path, coming, heading west, just underneath the Duck Creek Bridge. So you can kind of see a sightline, I guess, a perspective as if you were on a bike or a pedestrian. Obviously, this is March, the trees aren't full. But you can kind of see roughly what it would look like. This is right of long Duck Creek. And again, this area out here is all flat floodplain and the buildings would not, they would be above that little ridge there. Mark touched on this, these rezoning considerations in our previous case, but I'll reiterate them. These are prescribed in our zoning ordinance. And these are criteria which to consider rezoning requests or zoning amendments. I've touched on all of these subjects, all these subjects, and we believe they do meet these criteria. And I can further answer any questions regarding that. Just to, I will give staff recommendation. Staff contends this proposal conforms to the future land use map. It will, we do note that there is a continuing trend, a tremendous buyer demand for homes and limited inventory in the region and the city. This proposal increases housing inventory in the city while also improving an infill property, which is currently underutilized. This proposal is consistent with multiple goals and actions cited in the comprehensive plan. For, for these reasons and facts noted above, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request with the following conditions. A traffic study will be required prior to site development plan approval. The site development plan shall adhere in principle to the approved concept plan. And approval of this rezoning does not waive any applicable city, state, or federal provisions as required by law.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Questions and comments from the commission?
I have two.
You could have three, but take your two.
I guess my first question is probably just maybe for the staff. I was curious why this parcel is planned UMI on the future land use map when everything surrounding it is ULI?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll do my best to answer and I may have to defer to my colleagues because they did most of the research on this case. You know, that was what was designated at the future land use map stage of the comprehensive planning process that occurred in 2016 and adopted in 2017. I was not with the city and was not part of that process. Some individuals in this room were, two of us were not. So I'll lean on my colleague to my right. Greg, if you remember how those conversations went down, or anybody else who may?
I think there was a specific intent to place this as a UMI. It was discussed as a ULI, but under the prior leadership, it was essentially arrived at that this would be designated as a, a more intense area as you're heading down toward the intersection essentially of Devil's Glen and then State Street. So it was also somewhat of a parcel too, that was a little more isolated from the surrounding area, given that it's in a lower lying state. And the type of development, we weren't quite sure what was maybe going to go in there. But at that time, we did look at this and we felt that But at that time, we did look at this and we felt that, I guess, people who were in charge felt that this was the designation most suitable for this area, given the trailer park across the way as well, and then more recreational area, and then more commercial as you go further south.
I had the same question, just for perspective, and my guess, and it's sort of what Greg's saying, but was that maybe just citing what was happening on it at the time, it seemed to match it more. But to your point, it does seem like a, an inconsistent spot on the map relative, other than the trailer park directly across the street. But everything else surrounding it here is ULI and single family for the most part. So yeah, that urban medium intensity, UMI seemed a little unusual.
But I think even within the UMI, there could be a less intense use there. So we're looking at R four. And it doesn't have to be, and it doesn't have to be R four. I would say, this is, I'm being a little flippant, but if you were bringing the PUD plan before us tonight from nineteen seventy-two, I would be more apt to approve that than what, what you're showing us. I think, I think there are projects that would fit the UMI that are much less dense than this. And an example I would give, you use the Regency Apartments. And actually, in the statistics, the density is comparable. But the, the Regency Apartments do not have the freestanding individual homes in close proximity that this area does. If you look, if you think about where that's located, there's, you have wallaces, you have, you have a lot of vacant land around there. And it's not, it's not adjacent to all of these individual homes. So I, I hear what you're saying about the density, but the setting is a little bit different than this. So the picture of the reserve is, it's a very nice property. I'm sure that density is probably comparable, but that doesn't have any private, there's no single family housing surrounding that either. I agree with our plan that we, we want to encourage a variety of housing options in our community. I think this is a good place for that, but I feel like the R four is really intense. And if we, the thing that I didn't catch when I read this the first time, but when you went through your recommendations, Taylor, the site development plan shall adhere in principle to the approved concept plan. We just considered a case where we had an agreement that locked us into a plan that we all liked, because that's what we wanted. I feel a little converse about this. I don't want to lock into the plan that we're looking at, because I feel like it's a little bit more intense usage than I'd like to see. So if there's a way to leave the door open on less intense usage, I know we're just looking at zoning tonight. That's, that would be my preference.
Mr. Chairman, can I provide a little bit of answer here? We really appreciate your thoughts, Commissioner, on this issue. And I know Chris Curran had to, you know, rejoin his family in California, so he don't have the, the benefit of having the city attorney on here. So I'm going to do a terrible job trying to help provide some options that maybe the commissioners would like to think about. We still would have a site plan coming before us. And I believe the commission could ask staff to sharpen the pencil and go to work on that site plan. I've had some conversations in anticipation of perhaps this conversation with the developer. And I, my vibe is that they would be amenable to some discussion on us, on, on the site, at the site plan level. Another option might be, typically, we don't, we don't like to do this, but at the DAS, you could, you know, at your seats there, you could add your own conditions if you wanted to, if you were ready to. I don't know that you've had enough time that you would feel comfortable doing that, but if you did, it would not certainly offend staff. We certainly respect your opinion and your knowledge and experience. Another option, thirdly, perhaps, would be to postpone or table. And I don't know exactly which motion the city attorney would recommend, if you wanted to just take more time to think about it and have staff get some more input relative to your concerns about the density. You know, tabling it or postponing it are both, under arbitrary rules, options here. I think if you table it, whoever tables it has to then bring it off the table. And I think postponements is slightly different, slightly different process, so.
And then Janessa, you have two questions, you said?
Right, definitely still on the same page as Ann on that, and that's she really took over where I was going with it, so I appreciate that. My other question, and I was just kind of rereading and looking at this, was something that was brought up in the last case, and I was just curious, I was trying to figure out, is the petitioner the owner in this case?
The petitioner is not the owner, the petitioner has an option to buy the property. The owner is present in the room and has met with staff and indicated their willingness to move forward with this rezoning, should it be, you know, your pleasure.
I just wasn't really familiar previously with how that works, so I was curious.
Pretty, pretty common that we have petitioners as the, as the actual, or the applicants are the developers. And then the, the property owners are, you know, hoping to sell the property and get it rezoned. So it's, there's a sales transaction that's separate from our process here that they're kind of waiting to hear on.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
The other thought I have, kind of in keeping with your suggestion, Mark, is that if there is a dialogue or a conversation, assurances that this will move in the direction of less density, less intense use. We're still approving, we're being asked to approve an R four. It's not conditional, so we're opening the door up then to any R four level of usage.
Subject, that is correct, Commissioner, subject to your site plan review.
It still has to come back to us, and I understand that, but, but couldn't this, isn't there an option for this to be R one to R four? So there's a, there's wiggle room here within this density? I mean, within this urban medium density is R one to R four?
Yeah, maybe some type of blended uses.
Okay.
I think is what, is what you're saying, Commissioner, yes, I think that would be a possibility. Again, you have to have a developer that's willing to do that and, and spend the money and.
Right.
But we have to keep in mind too, situations that we come across later are, you know, well, it is, now it's been zoned U, R four, and it fits that, it fits that, you know, designation, and, and it is what it is, and now we can't go backwards. So personally, I'm, I don't think this is a good fit for the space to go to R four to that extreme with R one surrounding it.
Can I ask a question too about the, the flood zone? So they could develop it sooner than, let's assume the map doesn't get adjusted or finalized until twenty twenty-three. That would preclude the development as it's proposed unless they apply with FEMA for some kind of waiver or something where if FEMA were to say, hey, it looks like the map's going to be okay, so we'll go ahead and approve it now. They could potentially develop before twenty twenty-three and not wait for the official map to be adopted.
I think there's a couple avenues they could approach that through a letter of map amendment based on filling the property or LOMA. Taylor, do you want to jump in on that one?
Yeah, the, using the preliminary maps for justification to make them effective earlier, staff would not support that, and we haven't supported it in other applications. And I believe the DNR would not support that either. And these are, multiple entities are signing off on these, including, and FEMA has the first final say, I would say. Also, currently, the, as shown on the map, there's floodway. Significant portion of it is floodway, and we do not allow fill on that as well. So it's a bit tricky as far as an application goes. But as the preliminary maps are, it's likely just a waiting game for those, yes.
So just a follow-up question, Taylor. If the floodway is the, the lower portion,
Correct.
closest to the bike path, that's not, that's not going to be filled? There's no way that?
We, no, you're not, it's our, our city ordinance does not, and yeah, the model floodplain ordinance does not allow that, correct.
You know, I, I just would like to let the commissioners know that staffs, we do have an interest in this property being brought into a appropriate use, and we see it as underutilized right now, notwithstanding the, the former use there that was a productive business for many years. And I don't mean to disparage what, what was there, but what's currently going on right now, we're not comfortable with. I think the city would like to, and benefit from having it developed. But we're also very interested in, in sharpening our pencils and going back to work on this if the commission wanted to give us time to do so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a few comments here. I, I agree with what's being presented. It looks way too dense at this stage. One of my concerns is the entrance and exit onto Devil's Glen Road. I definitely share any concern that the, the residents above it would have, as would anybody that's looking at this. So I think somehow something needs to be really looked deeper into on the entrance and exit on Devil's Glen. A, a plan that comes back that's not quite as dense. In this case, I, I would kind of agree with Ann, that maybe we need a concept plan ahead of time on this one, just to make sure it is aesthetically pleasing. However, I do think this is a good location to put some higher density residential.
I, I don't disagree with that for a minute.
Yeah, and it's, it's close to the bike path, it's close to the park, it's perfect for having apartments and that kind of thing. But this just looks too intense. And given the Devil's Glen and the hill, I think we need, as, as the city, I think there needs to be a decent plan ahead of time as to what makes sense for getting in and out of that property. I would envision with something like this, you almost would need to put a light at some point, just because we would like people to not speed, but they're, in both instances, they're coming downhill. So unless they're riding their brakes, they're speeding. Maybe that's just me, you didn't hear me say that.
Well, in a hundred and forty-six units, somewhere, there's a studio or two I saw, and then there's one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. I mean, I don't know what the anticipated headcount is there, but would we go off at two, an average of two per unit? I mean, we're talking ballpark, three hundred people with in and out. And to your point, the, the traffic, it, it's clearly not going to be a luxury single home site. But in my mind, it's also clearly not this kind of density. But I think there's, to everybody's apparent perspective here, plenty of room for something less intense that works for, for everybody here. And that flood zone issue too, just the concept, it's, it's essentially in a lock till, till twenty-three. But the current use is going to go away either way, whether by code enforcement or negotiation appropriately. So we've got a challenging site, we've got some amenity potential with it. I think for that rental market we're talking about, hey, I can jump off my porch and go down and get on the bike path and go over to the park. And wonderful, high marketing capability, but it's got to be functional. And I'm concerned about the three-story view, especially on that northern unit and the proximity to the, even with the parking in between, that single family house just towering in there. I think there's no transition area to, to soften that blow, so that's kind of where I'm looking at it.
I, I want to go back to my original comments. In no way am I trying to discourage development on the site, because I think it's important and there's a huge opportunity for improvement. I just hope we can do it in a less intense way.
Yeah. Well, I do, I want to hear from the audience, so anyone in the audience with regard to this matter?
And why they're coming up, Commissioner, I, I don't know if we, if you mentioned that we did receive one piece of correspondence on this, and it has been placed in the file.
Oh, yeah, I missed that, I didn't see that, okay.
One piece of correspondence from somebody concerning the views from the bike path.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mike Richmond with Townsend Engineering, we are working with the applicant on the rezoning and site plan. I have a couple of comments about what you raised, and then Dave Kemp and the applicant can speak to the density issues. With regard to the floodplain, that aerial that's shown right there is taken from what's called a flood insurance rate map, which is kind of a coarse grained view of the floodplain boundaries. We surveyed the area and used a flood insurance study and determined the hundred year elevation is now called the one percent chance annual floodplain. We determine that by elevation, and so that is, existing has moved quite a bit to the southwest. And then the proposed FEMA maps are even moving it farther. So we're in the process of applying for a letter of map amendment with FEMA, which we should get in thirty to ninety days. Once that letter of map amendment removes that tract from the floodplain, it would be able to be built upon. So we're not stuck to twenty twenty-three for that. And then the second one is, I just have a question. When the land use is UMI, what are the criteria for deciding zoning approval? Because R four is one of the categories that is allowed under the UMI, but at what point do you make that decision of not allowing it? It senses an approved zoning under that category, is that just based on discussion?
It's like, how high is up? I, I don't know, but Mark maybe, or Taylor, just the concept of it, it's, it, there are some fuzzy zones in this, like, you, well, it's UMI, so you can have anything from a one to a four. Well, what dictates whether it should be a one, or a four, or a three, or a two? Yeah, that, that's part of the over, in my perspective, overall analysis of the intensity of the site, the traffic concerns, the holistic approach to looking at it. But I'll defer to Mark for something official.
Sure, so again, future land use map concept versus zoning concept. Certain future land uses allow, allow for certain zonings, but the rezoning is at the pleasure of the city, if you will. We define what the possibilities are, but those are only possibilities. It's not a use by right, you are not allowed, it's not a use by right to say, because I'm UMI, I get R four. No, you have to ask for it, you have to receive it, and it has to be evaluated based on the seven criteria that we've talked about today.
So Mr. Deutsch referred to our Iowa State training, our, our classes that we took. And one of the, my takeaways from that was the, the plan, the land use plan, the comprehensive plan is a suggestion, and the zoning is legislated.
Is the law.
So I, I don't know if that answers your concern, but you know, that's suggested use.
Yeah, that clarifies it, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
But it's a good question.
Yep. Others in the audience, yes, sir? Oh, Greg beat you to it, but you're number two, go ahead.
Greg Jager, in this case, twenty-nine eighty-two Halcyon Drive in Bettendorf. You're representing only me, and I'm only here because my wife saw this on the agenda. I live slightly north and west of here.
Is she paying you for standing up here now?
She's actually paying to keep me out of the house.
Oh, nice, okay, all right, had to ask.
Couple of points. I, I think there's a difference between a motion to table and a motion to defer. At least when I was here before, if the commission made a motion to defer, it didn't have to be brought back by the same person. It would simply show up on the agenda, that would be a way out of that issue. Secondly, as it relates to the density concern, you guys just went through a nice two and a half hour meeting, talking about density and putting an agreement together in writing. If you've got a property owner who's doing the right thing, and you've got staff who wants to support him, I think you could put together an agreement fairly quickly and have that be appended to the zoning request, and then you would be good. Third, quite, the third point I wanted to make is, I'm a little concerned about how the FEMA thing plays out. I'm, I'm no longer in the game, so I'm not the right guy to ask. But it would be awkward, in my understanding of things, to approve a site plan that cannot be actually done. So if there's a way to show that the site plan can be done, then I would say, go for it. If there's concerns about whether the site plan can actually be done until some other governmental entity acts, I might suggest that you would delay acting on the site plan until that other governmental entity acts. And that's just a thirty thousand foot thing. If Richmond can show you that they have the right to do it, and staff agrees, and God, going, you know, in God's grace.
Well, that's kind of where I was going with my, my question. It's like, I'm, I'm heading down a path for something that's effectively unapprovable or undeliverable, yeah.
But if you've got an owner who's doing the right thing, and you want to support him, and you've got staff who wants to support, doing an agreement so that the, the owner knows that if he brings forward what's shown on the agreement, staff will recommend it, I think is a way of helping to support the owner, even if you can't do the site plan for a period of time. Again, this is just me as a person, thank you for listening.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is James Cackle, I have the property that is right
Yes, my name is James Cackle. I have the property that is right north of the trailer court.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and I have some current concerns on the traffic. The traffic is really busy in that area times a day. Trying to get out of our driveway. We do wait quite a bit sometimes, you know. Two minutes might not seem like two minutes, but it's a little bit of a time. And in that north section there, there's like a wildlife corridor there. I, just two days ago, I had eleven deer run through my yard and across the street there that stopped traffic. And that happens quite a bit. I can be out there mowing in the summertime, and I'll see cars squealing and stopping their tires because of the deers running across there. And if that is going in like that, where will all that wildlife go? There's also a couple of red foxes I catch every now and then running through there, too.
You see, you don't catch them.
And sometimes that deer will sit in that lower area and you'll see a whole bunch of them down there, kind of, you know, having their feed and what have you. And also, if that goes in, is there going to be lights high in the sky lighting up that parking lot? An apartment area there. And the glare from that light, will that come over across the street, like into our windows and stuff? And if that does happen, is there a way you can put baffles or something over those to keep that light going that way? And fences, is there any fences being planned around there? Or is that all open where they can just, kids can run up to the street and the sidewalk and stuff like that? Is that, is there going to be like one main entrance going into that place?
Yeah, that we don't know at this point. We have no direct plan because we're just focusing on the zoning, but those are all good and valid comments. And I would have the same question too, just for example, your lighting question, if they were going to have some kind of high on the unit soffit type lighting, lighting up the area around there, that would, on a three-story unit and adjoining single-family, that would be one of my concerns in the, not just the density, but the impact from the higher intensity, higher story building to the lower single-family residential. So, yeah.
Yes, yes. And also, when you're on the bike path down there or recreational trail, it's real serene down in there when you're hiking through there and walking. It's, it's just beautiful. And then in the fall, when the leaves change, you can really see that over there on the hills. It's just a beautiful area down there. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep. Anyone else?
My name, my name's Steve Tomatic. I live at twelve twenty-two. I'm the north boundary of this property.
I see you. Okay.
I, anything they do affects me. I don't care if it's the lighting, or if it's the animals, anything they do down there. The three stories height, that is a big building, and I'm going to swap looking at a junkyard, and I'm going to swap it for looking at the roof of a building. I mean, I have no problem with the idea of putting something in there, multiple family of, but I'm, you're tearing up my, I don't have much view anyway, but you're tearing up what view I have by this three-story monsters that you're going to put in there. And there's a gentleman that, he isn't here tonight. He asked me today, and I said, about the view, and he said, well, my house blocks his view, my garage blocks his view. There's an outbuilding I have back in the back. It looks like a barn, and that blocks his view. So he says his view's already blocked, so he doesn't really care. But I'm just saying that the density of this property and a hundred and forty-plus units, and I don't care, and they said the the top rent is like twelve hundred a month. My God, come on. That's cheaper than buying a trailer from this guy. I mean, you'd live across the street. You can live in your own, your own area for twelve hundred a month. And now you're, anyway, that's me. I'm euphoria, but I'm not for this plan.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Yes, sir.
David Kempin, the developer, just to address some of the specific questions. The lighting, that hasn't been planned yet, but that could be, you know, street lighting or parking lot lighting that shines down. So it's good input, and thank you for that. That helps us tweak some of those details in the plans. As far as overall density, originally, when we first looked at this, you know, the urban medium intensity was R four slash R five. And, you know, so we looked at concepts, what does R five look like in this area? Because that's, that's part of the future, you know, acceptable land use. And our thoughts, if it was R three, it would have been restricted, it would have been an urban light intensity, because that's R three or under. So if the city wanted to restrict it, they would have done it at that time. That said, though, R four, I believe, allows up to one ninety-three units. But we could go back, and I think somewhere between R three, four, as far as density, that that might work for the site for, as far as the development side. I don't know, you know, I'd like to continue discussions if that's something we can do of what specifically are we looking for? And so we can get into the details of a plan for that.
Okay, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this case? Mark, can you just clarify from the R UMI and the R one to four and the ULI, or sorry, one to three, right? Is that the way it breaks out? You can do up to a four and a UMI, and you can do up to a three and a ULI?
Yeah, that sounds right. I don't have the table in front of me, but we do have a table in our zoning ordinance that shows from what future land use to which zoning districts apply. Maybe just give you a little bit outline of the zoning districts, what can be in those zoning districts. And R one is a single-family detached home on a rather large lot. So those are your, your large single-family homes, the typical picket fence, you know, large backyard. And R two, we start allowing smaller lots, but they're still single-family detached. That means they're not sharing a wall with another structure. At R three, you have both of those uses, so we carry them over. So our uses cascade into each other. So you have both of those uses allowed. You have now the addition of duplexes and up to three-unit townhomes, so three in a row townhomes. Once you get to R four, then you allow the multifamily situation like you've seen here. So R four brings in everything you saw in R one, everything you saw in R two, everything you saw in R three. And now you add the multifamily up to a certain limit. I don't want to guess at that because I, because I don't have the code committed to memory.
And how about height in an R three versus an R four? Are there different height restrictions?
There are. And then I do believe we have a section of our code that limits height based on the adjacent residential use. And there is some limiters there, too. Again, that would be more of a site plan phase analysis, so I haven't done that yet, or staff hasn't done that yet. We would do that at the site plan phase.
That would be.
I can tell you the heights if you want.
Go ahead.
Okay. And R three, it's a maximum height of thirty-five feet?
So that'd be three stories potentially. Yep.
And then R four, it's, let's see, I'm just looking at it. Mac, actually, it's, if I'm looking at this correct, it says the maximum same on our code online, thirty-five feet or two and a half stories.
For R four? So four and three are the same height?
Same height.
Yeah, I think there is notes underneath both of those sections that say relative to others. Yep.
Can I ask Dave a question before he's too far away from the podium? So I see the three apartment complexes that are closest to the bike path. The one that's the most northern one is, it says three stories, but it's fewer units. Is that accurate? So it's still three stories?
Yes, that's accurate. And it had to do more of the number of parking spaces and being able to fit everything. We had to scale back one, one building.
Okay. And is it up, I thought the elevation was higher there as well? So not only is it three units, but it's also kind of up?
Yeah, there's a slight incline. It's not completely flat on that, that upper level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Back to the commission then.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
Have I used my final?
No, she had two, you get two, so.
All right. Oh, good. All right, I better make it.
Keep it balanced here, so, yeah.
Mark, when you were talking about the uses in the different zoning classifications, what we're looking at, the concept that we saw, that type of building, multi-unit, multi-story, would not fit in R four, correct?
No, it would fit in R four, would not fit in R three. Multifamily, multifamily begins at R four. The townhome, three in a row.
You said it the way I meant to say it. So that, that would not fit in R three. It has to be R four to do this type of a building.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So I mean, to make it less dense with this concept, there has to be fewer buildings or fewer apartments.
Or I could even say, you know, out loud here, dangerous always, but maybe even if it's feasible, separate it. Part of it's R three and part of it's R four. I don't like the idea of a three-story on the highest part of the elevation, looking down on a single-family house. That, that doesn't feel good to me. But the taller buildings in the lower part of the lot on a bluff kind of deal, that's much more palatable to me. Even if you had to do that all in an R four with an agreed-upon site plan that worked and we could see versus, I'm very apprehensive, as noted, about opening the door to R four, and then it forever becomes all the rights and privileges pertinent there, too. So I'd rather, if somebody said today, decide, I'd say, well, R three I can live with, but R four I can't. But I could live with R four with the right constraints on it, but we can't see those yet today.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm getting the feeling that the commission would like staff to do some work here.
I think so.
And we'd be willing to do that. And I feel like we have a willing landowner and a willing developer that, you know, if we could turn this around pretty quick.
And a willing commission.
Can bring something back to you. So maybe that leads you, and, you know, and I'm not the attorney in the room, and I don't have my city attorney here with me, but the correct, the correct motion to give you the pause that you want, I think would be to defer. I think if you table it, then you've got Robert's rules where you have to take it off the table, and this person who made that motion has to want to do it. So I think it would be to defer to the next meeting and allow staff some time to do some work with, with the developer and the property owner.
I'm happy to make that motion.
So I would ask, has Mr. Kempin got enough ideas from us before we make a motion to defer?
Yes, yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
I've been in contact with Taylor and Mark and everybody. I think we can get more input and continue to work together.
Great. And I'd like to second what Roy said about that. If you keep that, those structures, four structures, that that one to the north be shorter. I just want to make sure.
Or relocated.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion then to?
Defer.
Defer.
Do you need the case?
That was my motion.
Oh, that's, okay. Ann's made a motion to defer.
What you said.
And do we have another Ann motion to second? Okay. Ann and Ann have motioned and second to defer. Case two-two zero zero seven, till the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, opposed, same sign? Okay.
Before we move on, Mr. Kempin, while you're here, I would just like to pay my personal compliment to you for the work that you're doing at the trailer park. I live in that neighborhood, and it's a fantastic improvement, and I greatly appreciate it. And I know other people in the city do, too. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We plan on replacing the roads, but we just want to, there's a lot of heavy traffic with the new homes coming in. We want to do that first. And then this fall, the plan is to put in new roads so everything looks nice.
Yeah. It really looks a lot nicer than that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for hanging through this long meeting, and your son did a great job being still and quiet. I was very impressed with that.
He's taking a public speaking tour, so he should come along and check this out.
Cool. All right. Love to see him involved early. So good. All right, next case.
Well, I thought we were done.
You thought wrong.
Kevin's still in the crowd.
You never put this in the record.
Kevin, oh, I didn't even see you back there.
Boiling away back here. I need something to eat.
Are you being punished?
Yeah, that's what I said.
The rotary launchers are going to cut it, Ann.
And I didn't bring you a cookie tonight either, sorry.
We're all disappointed about that.
You mentioned it. You mentioned it.
Yeah, somebody made reference to it.
You did. Or maybe Mark did.
Mark did, I think, yeah. Okay, Greg, nice to see you.
Well, hi, Greg.
Hey. The case we have before us here, twenty-two dash zero one zero, JJZ second edition is a replat. Three lots here that are going to be combined. These are three, four, and five of the JJZ first edition or JJZ edition in general.
Greg, can I pause you just for a minute? I'm myself having trouble hearing.
Come on, guys. We want to go home, too. Thank you. All right. Take her away, Greg.
Essentially, you're looking at three lots here. And plus, I should say, three, four, and five are the ones that are being replatted into a single lot. We're going to see the vacation of these easements between these lot lines as a part of this. And then just the combining of this into one site for what will be a future warehouse-type layout for this addition. The replat then involves essentially those three lots and then the removal of all the boundaries within, within the easement area as well. And then inclusion of necessary easements. We still have the drainageway easement here for storage, for what will be conveyance of stormwater into this area as a detention area. And we would also note in evaluating this location that we want to maintain no parking. And that should be included as a note on this plat along Centennial Court. That is standard practice along this area. Also, no sidewalks will be required as we don't want pedestrian travel in what is a rather heavily trafficked industrial area. We want to keep the maneuverability for larger vehicles open. And we don't really want to encourage a great deal of pedestrian traffic to what essentially is going to be an industrial site. Staff in looking at the proposal for this body would recommend approval of the replat. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Questions from the commission? Nope. Anyone in the audience for this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case twenty-two dash zero one zero, subject to staff recommendations.
A second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two dash zero one zero, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Twenty-two zero one zero is recommended for approval. Okay.
Next case, Mr. Chairman, involves a lot that is approximately directly across from the area we just looked at. And you're looking at lot eleven of JJZ edition. This is going to be the future headquarters of Silverthorn Corporation, Real Estate Development Corporation. We just got done looking at these three lots. This is the lot that is essentially just opposed to the bottom lot that is being replatted into this subdivision here. Final plat again is JJZ edition. And the area that was basically we're dealing with is lot eleven right here. Site plan shows essentially a building with four different units in it and three means of entry. Parking was sufficiently met with the interior parking and what was exterior. We've got the dumpster located at this site right here. We have improvements necessary for sanitary sewer cleanout being done. And then in reviewing the proposal, we look at the tree count. And essentially, on the landscape plan, we have the tree count being met. The location, the building will essentially be elongated facing northeast, southwest. And here is a view of that structure as if you were looking to the northeast and the three openings on the side, then a means of entry through the front for the Silverthorn corporate headquarters. And staff, reviewing this proposal, would And staff in reviewing this proposal would make a recommendation for approval for the site plan. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Questions or comments from the commission, please? It's a good-looking building.
It is a nice looking building.
Little front facade there on a typical, you know, elevation looks much nicer. Anyone in the audience with regard to this? There's not many of you left back there, so. Okay, come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-009, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-009, Centennial Court Site Development Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Case 22-009 is recommended for approval, which then takes us to 22-012, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the last remaining lots to be developed in, at least out of those that are facing 53rd Avenue. This is in essentially the Woodlands, Shops of the Woodlands Edition. This is Lot Number Three, Means of Entry coming off of 53rd Avenue and then coming down Slate Creek Drive. Means the entry is required to be on this site on Ontario Drive, according to the plat notes that were laid out and established when this was subdivided. And then we have Lot Number Three with all the conditions affixed here too. site plan is laid out essentially with the means of entry coming in here with the two-way drive coming to the site. And then there are four retail units with one restaurant area here. We have a dumpster located here. And then parking was actually three over for this site. We have a one-way means of going down through here in this area for traffic to traverse the site. And then there is also a means for cross-easements for parking and access. It's going to be a portion of this site development plan because we want to see the connectivity of all these lots. And then there was, as we've seen in past developments in this area, a sharing of parking for that burden. There'll be an outdoor service area as well right here. The restaurant size met the requirements for what would be a smaller restaurant for the C1 zoning, so they're just below that square footage. They've pretty much maxed out what they've got there. Also, the landscape plan, when we evaluated what we required, we wanted to make sure that all of these areas right here, that this is where the landscaping would be planted. There are too many utilities facing the south side here and that's a big problem right now that we have to deal with is getting, keeping these areas free and clear, given the number of utilities in this commercial area. So we made sure that they met the tree count they did on the perimeter. The structure is pretty much going to follow the same pattern of what we've already seen developed at the locale. And this is the elevation showing the layout again of an existing structure, but it's going to follow that same pathway pretty much and mirror what is already on site. Staff in evaluating this proposal would make a recommendation for approval with the conditions listed in the report. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Yeah, it's nice development over there and it's filled in nicely. So questions or comments from the commission regarding this case? Y'all still with me?
Yes.
I don't understand them one way. Can you explain that a little bit for me?
It met our requirements and in order for the parking to be accommodated on site, given the number of spaces, that is why there's the one-way over here. The fire access requirements, I believe, were met. And this falls in line, the width here for one-way drive falls in line with our requirements. So as a, basically, you're adding another row of parking here to help accommodate the site. So it wasn't like any code was, or a regulation or ordinance was being broken by this. It's a design that's permitted. It just accommodates more tra, more parking spaces within the site.
And is, and if I can add on to that, Greg, it is kind of a result of the constraint at the other northeast corner of the property, where, Greg, can you zoom down a little bit or move? Where we would not allow an entrance and exit there because you have people that are then jumping, you know, going, yep, people could come out of there and turn the wrong way.
Gotcha.
And so the actual plat note would not allow entrance there. So then you kind of had to redesign this thing all off Ontario and this is what we came up with.
That makes better sense.
Explain it better than that.
No, no, I get that now, yeah.
A little low blood sugar, I'm sorry.
No, I'm slow on the uptake too. I, I get it now.
So Janessa, are you going to ask or am I? Can she back out her four-door pickup truck in 16 feet?
I think Janessa can. If that's the question that is proposed to me.
She has a backup camera.
It just, it seems tight. It's got an 18-foot spot and just the size of some vehicles is, is 16 feet enough to accomplish that?
I mean, it's typically, I think a standard truck length is around 19 feet, but they do have overhang area there. There's a five-foot kind of buffer between the patio and the curb line there. It's tight, there's no, no question about it.
Yeah.
It needs to require.
Might need those little, small car park here signs or something, yeah. That's tight, so.
Compact vehicles only.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Any other, yeah, that went through me a little bit too. Just that, I, I get what they're doing, but just that, I don't know if there's enough space to make it really work. Nobody with a big vehicle parked there, I guess, so. Other questions or comments from the commission? Nope, anyone online? Nope. Anyone in the audience? Nope. All right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-012, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we've been doing the in and back. So we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-012, Site Development Plan on 53rd Avenue. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Case 22-012 is recommended for approval, which would, oh, we got one more ordinance text. I thought we were done.
Don't talk about fences.
Are you the fence guy?
I must be the fence guy.
I'm sorry, this is like one of the record-length ones, so sorry about that.
I was the one for McDonald's where they talked about some french fries.
All right. Taylor, again.
All right. Case 22004. This is a application for a text amendment to the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. The applicant, George Hallis, seat behind me, he lives at 4513 Stonehaven Drive. This lot is a, considered both a through lot and a double furnished lot or triple furnished lot, lack of a better term. And it's abutted by Stonehaven Drive, Wendy Court, and Crow Creek Road. The request is to amend the ordinance to allow a fence up to six feet in height or is to allow for him to construct a fence six feet in height in, on through lots that are abutting, abutting collector or roads or above. So this is reference to our federal functional classification network. Little history here on this application. The applicant previously requested a variance to construct a six-foot-high fence roughly there. This went to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment heard this case and denied it due to, mostly due to precedent for, they had similar cases come before them and they denied it. And for setting a precedent, they didn't want to set a precedent for future cases and it wasn't, and lack of a hardship. Just a little background about the neighborhood. This is a single-family neighborhood, close to school. Crow Creek Road runs east and west, just on the Davenport border. This is what he was proposing and is still proposing on just his property. And that is roughly 12 feet extending. Needs to be six feet high or at least five feet high due to a requirement in our ordinance, which I believe was implemented in sometime in 2017, roughly that timeframe. But it does require any barriers for pools be at least five feet high. This creates the situation where if you have a swimming pool and you need, he's allowed to have a four-foot fence in his front yard. He could extend that fence all the way to the sidewalk. It's totally allowed, but it cannot be five feet or six feet due to our current ordinance and thus would not meet a barrier for a current pool.
Pool.
Kind of a catch 22.
So that, having that in mind, and this is a through lot along Crow Creek Road. Crow Creek Road is shown here on our federal functional classification map. There's a number of roads that are classified as this or arterial and above. So there is noted traffic on this road. This is an, this is not an interior residential street. And this, there's, the right-of-way on this road is, is, I believe, usually larger, wider. It's one consideration. So a brief staff analysis. As I mentioned, the five-foot versus, there was a four-foot requirement prior to the five-foot requirement. So that would have met code that's, I believe, still used for regulations across Iowa and the country. The Board of Adjustment denied the request due to the lack of hardship and following precedent set by similar cases. The board, in their minutes, in reviewing their minutes, Chairman Gallagher commented that the city maybe should look at revising some of our fence ordinances, or fence ordinance to how, to establish how they should look along major thoroughfares. That was the brief suggestion. He stated, while there is noted high-traffic areas along these thoroughfares, they did not want them to result into these long lines of tunneling effect along long stretches of corridors. And I did mention the five-foot fence rule that there was prior four-foot fence rule and now there's five. So in reviewing the staff, the applicant's request, the current conditions that exist on that property and among many other properties in the city, we do get requests, the staff is inundated with fence requests. Takes a lot of our time. We do, staff would contend, there is a conundrum there with having a five-foot requirement for a pool and it cannot be allowed on a front yard, which, as noted, the applicant does not use, this is considered a front yard by our zoning ordinance, but he is utilizing that as a rear yard. So taking that into consideration, noting that Crow Creek is a collector and above, and also taking into consideration that the tunneling effect, and we don't want six-foot fences all the way against the sidewalk and creating a barrier per se. Be considered recommending repeal and replace of the current fence ordinance. So current, we'd want to replace the current ordinance with allowing six-foot fences in through lots, not exceeding six feet. Let's see, they would need to be abutting, abutting a major arterial collector or above. That, that, that yard has to be utilized as either a side yard or a rear yard. So we do have instances where a yard has a front door on one's frontage and maybe a driveway on another. I would not foresee that being the case for putting six-foot fence there. That would be utilized as a front yard. In consideration of not having a tunneling effect, that six-foot fence must be set back 12 feet and then have a, from the right-of-way line. And also, some type of, a minimum of one evergreen or comparable landscaping plant shall be placed every 25 feet. So it kind of breaks up that tunnel effect and, and makes it look nice. And I will note, the applicant, and this is a good example why this is, the landscaping requirement is good. He currently does have a landscaping berm right here and plantings there. So this is kind of a good case for what we'd want it to look like, I'd say. I mean, it's a really good case.
Yeah, for sure.
He goes above the threshold, I'd say. But that's just an example. So it's kind of a different type of request, but we are, I think it would allow property owners who have unique, who are, have their lots have been platted in such way along these arterials or collectors, they can utilize their rear yard in better fa, better fashion. And it's kind of an equal approach, incremental approach too. We're not talking about just double frontages. They have to be through lots and they have to meet these criteria.
Yeah, I think you've got the right constraints on it and isn't it wonderful when government works? Yeah, I love it, so, yeah. Makes total sense. I, I really like the fact that you've restricted it too. So, because some of those arterials and things you go along, it's like nothing but a fence and then they put up a cedar fence and it looks really crummy after a period of time and there's no vegetation along. So I think you've got the right teeth in this to make it work and still accomplish the goal. Yep.
I'm just curious, Taylor, this, the Board of Adjustment minutes that we received, this request was made in 2016.
Yes.
So.
That's a 2017, I misspoke.
So there must have been a lot of other similar issues that have come up since then that has kind of made this a more, this was a great example. But it's not, yeah, the poster child, but there have been other.
I can say anecdotally, yes. I don't, I did not analyze how many, we don't really have to track up how many nos we've say on the phone, so.
Right, right. Well, it seems like a good solution to me that.
I know a guy that counts nos. He was in tonight, so.
I would just add for the commission's clarification that we were contemplating something like this already in our zoning ordinance update. That's a big project and it's going to take some time and it would have impact.
Delayed it.
Yeah, delayed the petitioner. And so we thought it was appropriate to bring it forward and Taylor did much great work on that, so.
I'm not even going to ask the audience for input, okay? Would that be all right? Can I, you take a, take a pass?
He's an expert, he might have some.
But if you really want something to say, you could.
I'd just like to thank the planning group and everything for their assistance. I have no idea how to proceed without it.
Yeah, no. Notwithstanding what some people, folks feel, they are a great group, so, yeah. So I would take a motion for 22004.
I move to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
I'll second.
I'll third.
All right, we, we have a motion and a second. I'll let Lisa figure out who is the second. To approve case 22004, subject to staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, 22004 is recommended for approval. Do we have any updates, Mark?
I'm sorry. For tonight's longevity, so I, I just apologize for that. And then just one real quick thing, I think we've, staff received a lot of compliments tonight and I think there's one person in the room we haven't talked about. And everything you saw that was presented tonight was proofread, put together, copied, put on the web by Lisa Furman. And, and she, you know, that is a lot of work. And I just realized I hadn't mentioned that we couldn't have, you know, us as planners without her helping us. You know, she caught a bunch of mistakes in my original presentation, so just wanted you guys to know that a lot of work gets done.
She didn't tell us, just for the record.
Well, yeah, so, appreciate that also, Lisa, thank you for that.
And now she has to write all this up in the minutes.
While we were all done, I was about to say, while we're all done, she now has to go put all the minutes together. So just wanted to provide that accolade and thanks to everybody else.
Yeah, no, so.
Eric called him moral tonight.
No, we were not. And actually, I think the result ended up being pretty good. It was a long meeting, but a lot of good conversation and we do want to hear the input that people have. And I think a lot of it was very relevant and important to hear. So we all learn from it each time. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned.